Good evening, welcome to the study session of June eleventh. Donna, you do a roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmember Blush. Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Gilmore. Marinesco. Deputy Mayor Sherman. Councilmember Sapp. And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Tonight, community and economic development director Jay Hill has several presentations for us this evening. There we go. Jay, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Can I share my screen? Let me know permission. Oh, he's letting you in. Alright. So tonight, we're here to talk about a couple of different things. We're going to start off with shopping cart regulations. I was asked to bring something forward. So we'll just kind of go through at any point if you have additional questions, you can just chime in. I'm happy to answer them. We'll have time at the end to talk about a couple of policy decisions. So. Why are we interested in potentially regulating shopping carts? And I did some outreach to a couple of our major stores in town to find out kind of what they're experiencing. So some of this is rooted in that and some of this comes from research that we've done from other communities that have passed regulations. A few others borrowed heavily from Isiqua's. They have like the most comprehensive regulations. Like it's the big bulky Cadillac, but I definitely don't want that much stuff. So we'll talk about that. But so city retailers lose in excess of over three hundred carts per year. Now, that doesn't necessarily include the ones that are recovered, but some of the ones that are recovered are not necessarily in shape to be returned to service. So they end up recovering less than half of those. So that means, you know, a hundred and fifty carts or more per year are either finding their way to the landfill or disappearing off into ravines, down trails, whatever else. Once they are off the store premises, they're technically stolen property and they're often used to transport stolen materials either from the original retailer or subsequently. So it's a it's a problem when they're pulled by several store owners that people can load up a cart and just walk right out of the store. And so their cards are actually being used to assist in the condition of crime. They become a nuisance when they and their contents are discarded all over the city. Our code enforcement officer has personally retrieved forty carts this year in the last year of his employment. And each cart costs the retailer between three hundred and one thousand dollars. So if you're buying at the bulk discount where you're buying a fifteen thousand order of fifty carts at once, it's three hundred. If you're buying one off, you know, you're a smaller retailer, it can cost up to a thousand dollars for just a standard wire card. So other cities require a variety of things to either make it actually a crime to remove the carts or prevent the removal of the carts from the premises to start with. So there's some signage in the RCW. We'll go over that in a minute. If you have these certain items posted on your cart and on your premises, then and only then can it become a misdemeanor to remove the carts from the premises. So that's one thing a lot of cities are doing is just mandating shall have the signage on your carts. In practicality, we heard from some of the cart people, the store operators in town, that that's the first thing that gets taken off as soon as the cart is removed from premises. So there's there's an issue. At least if it's on there to start with, that gives us more work to work with. Locking and disabling systems. So there's a couple of different ways this is done. One of which is the electronically activated self-breaking wheels. Brand name of one of them is called Percheck, but essentially there's like a like a geo fence, like those invisible fences you would have for your dog. But as soon as you hit the edge of the fence, it shuts down the wheels. There's also some stores have put kind of like an awkward like pole or flag or something like that. Some stores have narrowed their exits, which is actually a violation of E A, but some people have tried that. Really a lot of different things to prevent the physical removal of the cart from the establishments. Yes, it actually recovers or requires a shopping cart recovery plan, which there has to be a whole plan of how you go get them back and who does it. It's really extensive work and there's monitoring and a bunch of other work that requires a lot for both the store owner and for city staff. They also sometimes require either dedicated company staff or city staff or cart services. Actually, in some of the larger cities, there's businesses that go out and retrieve the carts and basically sell them back to the store. So there's there's a lot of different things in all of these regulations, but they all kind of take some amount of monitoring, fees, compliance. And, you know, it'd be my preference that anything we do have, you know, a less minimal impact on staff requirements. Just because, you know, there's not a lot of us and we're already doing a lot, you know, putting too big of a program and putting too many burden on the existing retailers. You know, it's not going to do anybody any favors other than, you know, if we're trying to drive people out of town. So. So why is this subject so difficult? I don't think any city has like nailed it and stopped it entirely. But it's it's hard because the cart fees are often unable to pay fines. They take the cart from the premises. And now if they're if they're indigen, if they're unwilling, unable, they the fines don't get paid. It's difficult to book jail or detain for low level crimes. It's very expensive to prosecute misdemeanors, keep somebody in jail, et cetera. So they're usually not a priority for prosecutors, especially when they're having, you know, extensive caseload and stuff. Again, as I mentioned, the required signage is often removed from the carts first thing. The problem for the stores is they often don't have the required signage to fix. It's also somewhat unfair for them to be fined for being the victims of property crime. But without a fine, it's also hard to enforce that they follow through on regulations of their carts. So all this ends up doing is resulting in increased costs of compliance, which ostensibly gets passed on to the consumers. And then the RCW actually makes it difficult. It defines the crime. It says it is a crime to remove the carts if, and we'll go on to that in just a second. But it does not require that the signage be fixed. So like I said, cart theft is a misdemeanor crime if and only if it does all four of these things. The sign has to be affixed to it that identifies the cart retailer, has to notify the public, the procedure to be authorized for the authorized. Prices which can just say, no, you cannot remove this from the premises. It has to notify them that removal is a crime and then has to provide information for returning the carts. That's actually been one of the biggest problems for our staff is reaching someone at one of these establishments to know who to even return it to or how to how to get that done. So that information needs to be posted to the carts and on the premises of any store that has shopping carts. So as I mentioned, they did some outreach to the other stores, the major stores in here and trying to figure out what they're working on. Safeway is on the list for one of these locking systems in quarter four of twenty four. But that's many months away. Fred Meyer has no locking wheel system. They said they believe seventy five to hundred carts per year. They actually, if if the city were to require regulations pertaining to the shopping cart security, like a like a locking wheel system or something like that, that would move them off the list to get their system. So if they're further out, but there was, we'll just say some some winking and nudging. Like if you tell us, we need to do this, we can talk to our regional managers to get this done. So and despite multiple calls to Walmart, I think they've heard back from them right there. So, you know, I wanted to bring forward not just a problem, but some potential solutions. And possibly what we could do here is amend our nuisance code to include a new Title Eight, Chapter Seventy One, which would require that information from the RCW be made fixed to the carts and posted on the premises of the property. Regurgitate it, I just previously read. We could also require locking systems and that would include but not be limited to disabling devices on all carts. Store personnel, if they don't want to pay for, you know, the system, they could have someone dedicated to do that and to return the carts. Or there's other things they can do like bollards and chains and whatnot. Those are usually not as effective, but it's always good to get an additional option for compliance. And then finally, the last thing that we want to do is once we, once we have the required signage as a requirement for the carts, now it makes it much easier for us to create associated criminal penalty for the theft. So that's where we could have the two separate items, which are removing the shopping cart from the premises of the owner without permission and anyone possessing a shopping cart without written permission also misdemeanor. So there's some policy discussions that go along with this, though. So do we want fines or fees charged to cart owners for compliance? So there's there's two kinds of issues here, one of which is that there's actual costs to the city every time we return the carts. Will our code enforcement officer, our park staff, our public work staff are collecting these, hold them somewhere. We either have to take them back ourselves or wait for them to pick them up. There's administrative and holding time. Who is responsible for it? We have a single point of contact, et cetera. And also without a fine or a fee, if we're requiring that they comply with our code, our code defaults to an infraction as a violation of our code. So that'd be five hundred and fourteen dollars is our standard infraction fee. That's what we charge for code enforcement infractions and other fractions, infractions throughout our code. So we don't want to charge the store owners five hundred and fourteen dollars every time a car gets taken out of their premises. So if we actually went to a smaller number for this particular fine fee or we had staff costs, actual staff costs as part of this, that would avoid the five hundred and fourteen dollars. And then finally, the last thing is exceptions for small businesses. There are some smaller retailers downtown who, you know, a forty thousand dollar locking system or something like that, it's going to be really difficult for them. They're not the bulk of the carts that are being removed and taken off the hinterlands. And so perhaps there's a place for some kind of smaller business exception at some threshold of square footage. So these are policy discussions here that I would love to get some council input on. All of it is really, you know, all three of these potential solutions. So amending the eight point seven one, requiring the locking systems, creating the criminal penalty and then the remainder of these items here, just kind of working through this with y'all to determine like what should an ordinance look like that we can bring forward.
Thank you so much.
I I have some thoughts. I absolutely don't think that we should charge a business for somebody stealing from them. I think that's that's wrong. I also don't think it's productive to to charge somebody a fine that's not going to pay it or can't pay it as well. I would be interested in requiring maybe by January one, the stores to put in locking mechanism, locking mechanisms on all their carts. Or also the small store, maybe stores five thousand square feet to nine thousand and nine nine square feet have the pole and the carts won't even go outside. You know, the smaller stores don't need them to go outside. So let's make them put the poles in. Let's do the stores ten thousand square feet above, require them to put locking wheels on there. And until January, we need to have an ordinance for recovery system. They need to go out and get their carts. Walmart did tell me, manager, that he does send out staff to look for carts. So, you know, I think give them until the end of the year. That's plenty of time to get the locking mechanisms on their things. Smaller stores have the poles, carts don't even go outside. Because I just don't think it's productive to charge a person who ain't going to pay for a card. I mean, they can't, they, not that they won't, they can't. We know they can't. I mean, they can't. And they're not going to get charged because there should be people down there that are going to have mental health, melanin problems, which we know that you can do other things and not get charged because of that reason. So I think it's just really. That's not going to work. And charging the stores, it's not fair. It's not fair to charge a business for somebody stealing from them. So I think, and is it fair to force them to lock the wheels? Probably not, but you know, it's the times that we're in. And, you know, that's why I'm saying they got to the end of the year to do that. And then until then, we got a recovery system. They have to provide as a recovery system plan and get their carts.
Respectfully, I do disagree part of that. I feel like the businesses need to be responsible for their thing and they need to do due diligence for their communities and their surrounding areas around them. So when a neighborhood grocery store or store doesn't try to protect their asset, the people around them change for that. And so for them to just say, oh, no big deal, nothing happens to us if we just ignore the fact, that's not really fair to the community around them.
Yeah, I'm not.
Give them your options, like, so your option where, oh, if you don't, so we set it up like this. Either you get locking wheels, you hire a retrieval company, or you pay the funds. You know what I mean? We give them options or however you want to deal with it. You know what I mean? Yeah, that's that's up to you, however you want to do it. But these are the three things that we're going to say. I mean, just for the dollar store, great, you can put poles on those things. What are you carrying out of there that's that heavy, you know? But, you know, to Walmart now, you might be carrying furniture on that, so you're going to mark that. You know, as far and Walmart, I think those are right here in our community. Most of us go there at least once a day. I think it'd be a good idea because I see carts all over the place in my alley full of. Want to talk about that and the things that just kind of make people not want to shop around downtown. They come and hang out in our parks. There's forty carts around there. And, you know, and if we have stuff like that going on, I'm only going to want to shop in the stores there either.
Well, they're not going to want to come to those parts of town when they see that all over the place. We are trying to bring people to our communities and their dollars, correct?
Yeah, and they're going to spend it in the big stores too.
And so wherever they're spending their money in this community, we need to bring them there and make it a place that they want to go. And they look outside and down the sidewalks and the streets and the trails, there's shopping carts full of garbage all over the place. They're going to go, you know what, maybe maybe I'll go to a different small town. And I really think that some of the bigger stores need to be responsible for their own thing. I have to be responsible for what happens in my yard.
I mean, well, are you? I mean, if I come into your store and steal something, should we give you a ticket because you left the door unlocked? I mean, you don't want to be punished for a thing and we shouldn't, we shouldn't punish for somebody stealing from them. I think that is totally wrong. I would like to punish the person who's stealing, but obviously that that's just not going to work either. So, I mean, we require them to to lock their carts up or put their wheels on there, then the problem is solved. That and we require the smaller stores, I can't afford it to put the poles on there. That problem is solved. There's no carts going outside from the smaller stores and the big. And I tested that locking mechanism, by the way, at Target. I tried to push it across over there by the Thai Garden and those wheels locked up. So, but I think that it's a slippery slope. We start punishing businesses for people stealing. What's next? I mean, I mean, seriously, they don't pay for your pay for your meal that you serve them. And the cop comes and he says, well, George, you gave it to him. It's your fault. Your fault.
Right, so if we make it a rule that they have to have a locking system or something similar, then we're going to fine them if they don't, right?
Well, that's George.
Well, yeah, but we have to enforce the rule.
Well, I I think we should make the good locking system period and just eliminate the problem completely. Well, they have to. I mean, it's going to be an ordinance. I mean, we're going to do it.
If if they don't, then it defaults to an infraction.
No, I think that we should write it where if they don't put the locking wheels on the cart, then they don't have a business license. That is going to be the requirement to have that business is to have that locking card.
But if we give them the other option where you're like, you can do one of these three things, which it sounds like Fred Meyer would be interested in getting a locking system. Safeway's getting a locking system. I I don't think it would be hard to talk Walmart into it if we tell them they have to. But if you say, but if you don't, we're going to charge you five hundred and fourteen for every cart we recover.
And I think then they'd be better stewards of the community because I think they would probably, you know, care a little bit more.
I think the outcome would be the same pretty much. Then.
Just give them the options, then say, hey, look, this is what we're trying to do. This is the reason for it. And this is how we're going to present to you guys. No, we're not forcing anybody to do anything. We're encouraging you to be good stories and we're giving you three options on how to do it. Dude, I'd love to give them all community services when we catch up with their cars. But as we said, the reliability of them, number one, getting a community service isn't so good. I see Jerry out there every day, poor ladies on the ground sweeping and cleaning up stuff. You know, I'd love to see a lot more of that being utilized, but people don't show up, you know, and so we need to use what we got.
Do we know how much we're paying to recover carts every year? It sounds like we pulled out forty last year, like I know that.
It's been much more than forty because that's.
That was just coding. Parks and Public Works is.
I personally returned over a hundred last year.
Okay.
We haven't quantified that as the one piece of data that in totality, right?
True, and and that's the number of carts that have been returned. That doesn't necessarily mean that that wasn't some of the same carts over and over or something. And if you returned a hundred, I mean, maybe a bunch of those were in service and moved off again. I mean, so the actual number of carts being removed might be far exceeding that.
And frankly, and frankly, if the carts aren't identifiable, we're not spending staff time to go around. Though they may go in the recycle bin, they may get stashed in the wild until somebody tries to claim them. But again, we don't have storage space either.
But it but it is just short of three hundred carts per year that cumulative league of retailers are losing. All going to the landfill. So we might be collecting forty through code enforcement and, you know, whatever, even double that through parks. There's others, other ways that those carts are being lost or.
Well, and they didn't even mention interior, at least the driving ones, the scooters. Those are way more expensive and I have found them too.
I thought they did have locking.
They, the people have figured out how to do, how to make them, you know, running it, so.
And those things will go very fast.
I I wanted to emphasize the point that we don't want to chase around all these carts and use city time, save staff time. Maybe have to have to hire another F T D or full F T D, chase down shopping carts. I think there are, I believe we can spend our money on the emergency, do another F T D and chase down shopping carts.
But there's also, I have some companies in town who are willing to take this on. And so they would get paid from the store instead of perhaps. So it's like cart return fee. They go, you want your cart back? I have it. You pay us. And so basically, they have offered to, I know a few people who have, who are like, who are willing.
What's to say if someone doesn't, she's hostage and then returning them for eat? I mean, people would be known to do that.
Well, yeah, when I was a kid, you used to get.
Someone's proud about it and that's.
But maybe the stores would be a little more diligent about watching their carts and having people in the lots and making sure their carts don't get stolen. If they don't want to pay to get them back.
I'm just saying, and we're setting up a system where student card and return for a hundred bucks.
Maybe it's not.
It's like extortion. I don't know.
Maybe it's less fee.
I mean, people will steal, steal, steal the carts to bring them back and get money. I mean, that's, that's. Doesn't take them.
Someone was bragging the last couple of years, I have twelve bucks.
Yeah, if you offered, if you want them to get paid to bring carts back, they're going to steal them and bring them back. That's, you know, it's kind of like, you know, you steal, you're stealing great at Walmart.
So.
And come back in the daytime and return the stuff.
Yeah, I'm I'm not saying that just anybody could return the carts. It would have to be from a particular company that they have, you know.
This is a service that we operate.
And we will do this for you and there would be a contract, I'm sure. And, you know, so.
It's going to be operating, it's going to be shown anyways. They need the business.
But my point is for for me out here is that it doesn't, city doesn't have to get involved. There's other options there. We don't have to worry about hiring.
Well, well, we have to stop the the person pushing the shopping cart down the street. I mean, a private company can't stop the person pushing the cart down the street. We can't even take their stuff out of the cart because it's their belongings. We can't take a pizza box out of Brewer Park and sit next to it and you say that's your pizza box, empty pizza box, by the way. So that's, I'm not sure that that would work because the carts are being, most carts are being used. We we know we see them.
For some possessions, that's an issue. If the cart is labeled, it has the signage on it, it's off their premises, then it can be removed.
By a police officer, but not by a private company.
No, I have not, I'm not flying that. An individual shouldn't do that. But if it's sitting just right there and it's empty.
I think the carts they were more concerned about are like when there's four of them behind a restaurant, the alley that have been there for, when they want to get the rain knocked off because somebody loaded up the stuff and left it back there and then they started collecting it. And then when is that someone's property? When has that been there for two weeks and they just accumulated more? You know, they're not hanging out with it during the day. You know, once it starts raining out here, those carts just turn to all sorts of.
And then have you been on the trails? You've been on the trails with me before. We've had to pull those things out and in the mud and the mud. Sometimes you're way out there. That's not fun. It it's not easy to pull those things out of the wood.
I don't know how to get them.
They get couches.
We drug a couch out of there and sent it way deep in there.
Perhaps we could go kind of item by item here and and get consensus up or down. That way we can kind of move through kind of all the policy discussion. So and and kind of focus our energy on one thing at a time here. I'm hearing a lot of good discussion. It's okay to dial it on each item. So amending the nuisance code to require the signage that's identified in the RCW here. Is everybody at least good with making that a requirement?
Yeah, that's fine. I think that's kind of a story.
Requiring the locking systems. It sounded like there was some consensus for the larger stores to have locking systems, but perhaps the smaller stores were pulled. Was that?
Well, that was.
I'm just going to say places like ShopInHawk, they can't afford it. They are so good. They they will take the cart for you the whole time. You're not letting carts coming out of that store. They are awesome about it.
They're they're below this.
They are definitely below.
Yeah, Food Bank has twelve and there's two cart people that go out with them all the time to make sure.
But they're with them.
Yeah, all the time.
We'd have to confirm square footage. And see what the appropriate.
That seems a little big.
Places like ShopInHawk. Or things like that that might have. I think Goodwill is one that has, that have the carts as well.
Right.
I'm pretty sure you can't take the ones out of the dollar store.
Dollar store has.
Encourage people to do that.
See if we can get a consensus.
Okay, so the consensus here would be this item that's on the screen, measures to contain shopping carts on site. So they must provide either disabling devices, post store personnel or in-store installed bollards.
This gives them an option.
This gives them the three options.
I love that.
So everybody has to do at least one of them. But there was some discussion of the larger stores absolutely requiring the disabling devices. Is that?
So, yeah, all these would be the options for the largest.
Larger stores, yeah.
But you said it under.
And we can talk about the size. Five thousand's an idea, but we can dig into that.
I wouldn't give them the option of posting store personnel to deter because you're not going to deter them. So.
Posting store personnel and utilizing.
I think that, I think they need to be locked, they need to be locked and then we need the cart retrieval for now. And because once they're locked, they shouldn't be able to remove them, correct?
The wheel locks?
Yes, the wheel locks. Once we have.
It becomes very different.
Yeah, yeah, so, so.
I've been to stores though.
I don't.
I mean, that that they will not let you leave the store without a person with your cart. They push your cart. So that is a personnel type of thing. And I've been to those and they've been successful. I've never seen carts outside of their lot. So that is an option. You know what I mean? It's just an option.
Yeah, well, you got a hundred people coming out of Walmart doors every.
But it's an option if they so chose.
I I just think make them put the lock, the locks on there. That solves the problem. The locks and the bars, it's done.
I don't like. We're taking them to all having to do one thing.
There's actually been some stories, people being injured by the locks not functioning, pushing their car out and run into it. So I know it probably doesn't have an option. I just bring attention to it.
And so the shorts have the option to decide what they want. I I think that they should, I mean, just choose one and go with that. Like each store should have that, but that's my opinion and we can all decide on that.
So we're saying that they can have the persons outside, maybe watch the carts and then no locking mechanisms. That's what you're saying. So that's really not going to solve anything.
If you don't have the locking thing and you have the post the store personnel, I think that one, we should add and hire a cart retrieval. Company. So that way they don't have to put up the money to put the system in. And, you know, they can try and keep it on and if they don't, then they can call their guy and go, hey, we lost the cart.
What's the goal here? The goal is to keep the carts off the streets, off the street, right?
How many times going to say if we can't find one?
I mean, if they're, if they're not off the part, the property, then that the problem solved. The problem is solved. I don't know.
As an individual, I don't like being told you have to do this and it's only one way, you only have to do it one way, you have no other options. So this just gives them a little room to go, okay, well, we have to by by rule, but look, we've got four different ways we can do that.
So let me clarify one second. Talk about a retrieval company or just a retrieval plan, correct? It could be in-house, right? It's just submit a retrieval plan.
I think if we do that, we need a mechanism for removing that option from them.
I see.
Like for instance, if we find too many out and about, it didn't work for them, then we can say, okay, that didn't work. Maybe let's go back to these.
Correct, yeah.
Isiqua has a pretty extensive section of the, like, the cart retrieval plan and the, and who's responsible. And there's, there's a whole series of items that just.
Yeah, I like it.
And we don't have to have consensus here tonight, but we would like to have majority. So we have, so we have some direction. We can refine this, bring it back. So there's some more certain date, right? There's a path forward.
And just the the retrieval plan, like we can use Isiqua's, it's just one more, one more application. Is there a fee? Is there? Who reviews and approves? Is that a community development issue? Is that a police issue? So on and so on. So see what some of the other communities have done and we'll look at that for this. This one, it sounded like there was.
Did we get consensus? Did we get consensus?
Of.
We don't need consensus.
Or or an idea.
Majority.
Majority that we're not gonna require locking carts. We're gonna give them four options. Which Safeway doesn't have a security guard anymore, but they can't afford it. So we're gonna give them the option to hire somebody to watch the carts. I yeah, I don't see that working, but.
That's my one one out of seconds.
Well, yeah, but it's really not their fault. I mean, it's really not a business's fault that somebody steals from you. It's like, it's not your fault. I come in there, steal from you or I don't pay for my meal at George's, like I said. People stole from me all the time. It's just that, you know, it's. You know, I should be punished for it.
But that would community around us.
The challenge with that is that no store is required to have carts. It's an option to have carts that get stolen, so it means we can.
Well, they can do that too. That's 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 that's.
I think staff time energy should be rooted and go towards the repercussions of homelessness, not little bad days solutions like this. I think you should have hired a homeless coordinator like we had two years ago. I think if you you take a lot more um homelessness and and not be um putting band-aids on. With a triage operation.
Well, definitely as a business owner, I'm taking the cheapest option and it's not gonna work. Because I'm not gonna stand outside and watch cars if it were if it was my store.
Okay, so if it doesn't work, then I am gonna play. They have the option. If it's if they can't do it that way, then they get a fine.
I mean, it's not really the cheapest option. If you if well, if you operate forty hours a week, for example, you have to pay somebody minimum wages is fifteen fifty plus the overhead. It's more like twenty dollars an hour and that's over forty K a year. If Safeway is only gonna cost forty thousand dollars one time for their locking system, that's the least expensive option.
And I'm hoping they do that.
Right.
But but I think that they're gonna say, I'm just gonna have somebody watch the carts and they're not gonna do that. That's what's gonna happen and their carts are gonna be down.
The other side to have the card retrieval plan that we're talking about. In order to be able to go with that option. So it's not that that's just a one-way thing. And then if you fail to comply with your card retrieval program, then we can readdress you and say, okay. That didn't work for you. So now we're gonna need you to go with one of the other options. So we we give them the benefit of the doubt in the beginning and then if they prove us wrong, then we do what we're gonna do.
Uh, in instead of a retrieval plan and a. Program and and some of the words I've heard, what if we just say they have to have retrieval staff? Like that's their requirement or we put the onus of the the retrieval on them just without having a plan that has to be reviewed and approved and so they just it's. Creating a form.
Will there be examples from that city maybe?
Of what the plans look like and the requirements are. I I couldn't bring that.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
I think what Jay's saying is there there's. There's labor involved with this. If they submit a plan, we review it, we approve it, and then we have to come back to that and affirm that that plan is being met. Over whatever.
What does the monitor?
Whatever duration, e- exactly right. So.
The lines.
Yeah, we're concerned, we're we're concerned with staff time. Uh, wanna focus our energy where it's appropriate. So if we can find a app. An avenue that um achieves the goal and has the the most minimal impact on staffing.
Um. If code enforcement's going out for cart calls and deal with forty of them over the last year anyway, we're having this issue anyhow. And if you have. Parks departments picking up carts and all the rest and get rid of them. So this is becoming an issue no matter how we figure. So it's better to just get in front of it, get it over with and figure out how to do it.
Could we identify a number of carts that the store has that requires locks? Just because I I agree, I. But but the mayor's point and Mark, your point, they um. It's gonna cost money. If if we give them this option, then we have to, if we give them the option to provide us with a plan. Then there's some sort of, even if it's just to prove that they have a program, we have to look at that. We have to see, we have to stamp it. Um, and then when they don't follow through on it, that's more work on the city's end to say, hey, it doesn't look like you're following through, which is. Another moment of us monitoring how many carts we've found. Like, hey, Safeway, you said you were gonna watch this, but we found a hundred of them this year. Is that the threshold? Is it fifty? Where are we at with that? It's a lot of questions that we have to ask ourselves about where we mark this off. Because it has to be the same for everybody. Um, and then we have to do it, go back and force it and. Deal maybe with lawyers now. Because they're gonna have their feelings about how they move forward because they did make their decision, which we did allow them to do. And did they actually violate at that level? But you know, Walmart has a hundred carts, two hundred carts, however many they have.
Probably a thousand.
Yeah, however many of those folks have, like, I get it, they're small stores, there's people with.
Yeah.
Ten fifteen carts and there's a different level of enforcement for those people than than big box stores and having that in place, you know. If if we ever aspirationally do get a Costco or a Home Depot, letting them know immediately, like, bring those in with locks.
Even with recovery plans, so Walmart. Safeway or Fred Meyer's driving around looking for carts and then there's somebody pushing a cart down the street. What do they do? Nine one one, I need your help. So there's your, there's your cost. And that ties that up for that officer up because of shopping cart.
Gonna have their staff call nine one one for a cart I use.
Well, I mean, you're.
I mean, yeah, of course, it's a possibility. I just don't.
Well, it's a recovery. You're saying you want them to recover their carts. So they're they're driving downtown and somebody's pushing their cart. How do they get that cart back from that person?
That's. But I I see what you're saying, like, like a a Walmart employee cannot go touch that person and take the cart. Because the crime is a civic crime, so yeah, that's good.
So so Walmart really can't recover a cart or Fred Meyer or Safeway or Shop and Hop from. Somebody that will will not willing to give it back to them.
This would only really, I guess, apply to like the abandoned ones. But but actively being used ones, you're correct.
And there's a lot of actively abused carts in the in the city. I see them pushing pills and down yells and riding them and everything else, so.
And also something. And and also something to consider too is we, I mean, if we're we're talking about this, like, there's already so many carts out there that we wouldn't necessarily. Maybe we'd want like some kind of a grace period or something for the carts that are already. I say in circulation to be returned or or lost or dismissed for throwaway or whatever. Um, because we wouldn't wanna have a fine immediately and then all these carts start getting returned to them or getting fined for. These carts that are outstanding, that have been outstanding for months or years or.
Yeah, I don't think, don't take it, take us a long time to.
When we go.
Get all those carts all.
When we go back to that, they have to be marked with this information, though. Once they do that, we know that's a new cart.
Right.
So the ones that don't have that, you're like, okay, that's old news. That's unfortunate. Um, that would make sense. Those are the starting point.
But they already told you they ripped those off.
Uh, that's usually the first thing to go, but there's there's ways that it's bolted on engraved. Yeah, exactly. So there's there's things that other cities have figured out ways to make it work. I think I have enough information to bring back a couple of options on this one. Um. So the next one, creating associated criminal penalty for theft. Um, this would allow. Actually be a crime and have some teeth to remove it or to be in possession of it. Um, thoughts on this one here? Probably not gonna be a primary offense. It's probably gonna be, you know.
I like it as a secondary offense. If you use it in shoplifting and we're trying to prosecute you for shoplifting, I don't mind adding on an extra like, you stole a cart.
And and that happens all the time.
I don't I don't think our prosecutor would ever take these as.
Not at the.
Soul.
Right, in fact, but in a list of things, it just be. Very, yeah, yeah.
I know that there's a lot of things that we don't do or not able to prosecute. I I think you're. But if if we can, then it it is maybe an added deterrent. And I know that. There's a lot of, a lot of the people with carts aren't people we're going to be able to meaningfully prosecute or find and I get that.
Or give a a prosecutor an attorney because uh we're gonna have any of those pretty soon or enough.
Defense attorney.
I mean, that's what I meant. What happened to the prosecutor, the defense attorney? Actually, I think they were pulled for a week.
Uh, we have concern on those sides.
Yeah.
So basically some one more check mark out. Okay, one more thing to do and and I think that.
The more we can have.
Um, it do we have? I I think this one we all seem to have some. Good, okay. Um, so go back to uh any fines fees. So if they haven't complied, um. Violations in our code just default to an infraction unless otherwise specified. So. If we added a segment just stating staff cost for recovery, so are. You know, somebody's loaded rate at eighty dollars an hour times thirty thirty minutes. To recover a single cart or what is that? You know, kind of kind of an appropriate fee or fine.
In that theory, are you training them or giving them to the dump?
That's.
Something either.
Well, the and that's I I kind of going to the fourth bullet down here. Are we storing the collective carts? Are we returning them? We store them until our recovery company takes them back or the store comes and gets them. I mean, we don't have a place necessarily for them right now, but. I mean, frankly, I would rather us find them and them come pick them up than than. Us hold them back. Um, because then we're the car recovery company. Um, I don't really want our staff to be obligated to that as well. But I mean, it's what we're doing right now. In a lot of cases, we're just throwing away. I mean, they're in such bad shape. We're not gonna hose them down and clean them and make them all pretty and stuff. And by the time we get some of them. Stores don't want it back anyway.
But then we're paying a fee for that.
We are paying. Right.
But since sprinkles less time than that than managing, storing them, managing when somebody's gonna pick them up. Whatever receiving process, inventory process that would be a problem. Yeah, there's some, there's some procedures.
There's there's a cost exactly in in administering that as well.
Keep them on the damn log to not worry about it. Keep them all in the log. Hey, lock them up, put the poles on. None of them leave property. We're done. We don't see anymore on the street. The ones that are on the street now, well, little by little, we'll get rid of. I mean. And we, if you wanna charge them for those, if they don't want to to come get them, then fine, but keep them on the property. Then there's no problem. Lock them up, put wheels on them, put poles on them for the smaller stores. Or even also the big store. The big stores want to do poles instead of locking wheels. That's that's fine too. I mean.
The, if I might add, the the problem with the larger stores is they usually have large parking lots and the poles are designed to keep it from going out of the store. So you have people hit the door at Walmart and have to like shuttle stuff back to their car or whatnot. Um, the locking makes.
I mean, I agree. I just I just meant that, I mean, it's an option if they wanted to, you know, I mean, just keep all the carts. On property, on Safeway's property and Walmart's property and Fred Meyer's property, then there's no carts out on the streets, period, at all. So then there's none of none of no work for the city, no work for private industry, no work for anybody to go out and do these carts. Keep the carts on the property. Make them put locking wheels or poles. And um, you know, and give them time. Let's give them time. Let's give them to the end of the year. And let's let's have them do the recovery plan from now until, you know, December thirty first. And then January one, they need locking carts or pull the business license. I don't, I I mean. They're gonna do it. You we've already found out Safeway's already got it budgeted. Fred Meyer said if we if we force them to do it, they will, they will. Move to the top of that list and Walmart's gonna be a push, but you know, they're gonna do it. I mean, it's it's a. You know. And publish your business license. I mean, keep the carts on the property. Or I mean, that isn't having to be a penalty, but you know, something. Could be a ten thousand dollars. If they don't, like twenty thousand dollar fine. I don't I don't know, but let's. So let's get everybody to the shopping, the locking carts or the poles and then the problem is completely solved. There is no carts on the streets. Period.
What do we do if they don't? We just find them?
No, we we make them do it. If they don't do it, then they're not allowed to operate in shelter. I I mean. It's it's gonna be a part of your business license. If you own a grocery store or shopping cart, you need to have a locking mechanism or a pole. Keep the carts inside the store or lock the mechanism on the wheel so they can't leave the property, period. That that is that 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 is. Way you have a grocery store with shopping carts and shelter.
I think that personally, the the. It's sent in is the fine for a cart that leaves. It's not necessarily the business license, right? That hurts the city just as much.
Yeah.
Business if not more. Um, so actually the cars that do leave site, a fine or a penalty. For each one of those is gonna be man set up for for those for the systems are keeping.
But I mean.
That store closes and somebody's prescription is in that store and that store is locked because of shopping. That that's an issue.
Well, then eventually you're gonna get places like Walmart that's not gonna pay five dollar fines times a hundred. Because, you know, and then you're gonna be in that boat down the road anyway, but uh.
With collection.
Yeah, you know, it's gonna, you're gonna be in that boat. Let's just keep, I I think they'll comply. I really think that if we say that this is a big problem in our city. This is how we're going to solve the problem. You are going to put locking wheels on your carts and you're or you're gonna keep your carts inside the store with 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 large poles. Either one that you wanna do, that's it. You've got December thirty first to accomplish that that goal. Um. If not, then okay, we charge you five hundred dollars a cart. Every cart that we see off your property is five hundred bucks. It's across the street. At the gas station, the Chevron, we're gonna charge you five hundred bucks there. But. But the I think the solution should be to keep the carts on the property. And then we don't have no staff time, no code enforcement, no police. You know, because I don't know Walmart or how anybody's gonna retrieve their own carts from a homeless person without. Having an issue. We have some people here in town that would do that and assault a homeless person to get the cart back, but. Do we want that? We don't want that. So.
I don't think.
I I I don't know that we do.
Yeah.
Um, I I guess I I would ask, maybe I can kind of poll, um, with the finer fee. Do we want it to be an infraction or staff time? And if I could, do you mind if I ask for kind of a like?
Well, we gotta come up with what we're doing with the. The plan, though, is 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 the plan to make them get carts.
We have, we have a majority that said they come up with measures. We require them, that's a locking mech- mechanism, uh some type of barrier that re keeps it from being removed from the store. A personnel, um. Placing in a personnel or something like that that would keep it from exiting the site.
And then any carts that. Do make it off the site presumably because their methods were not implemented or failed, then there's a fine. Uh, or a fee essentially, obviously, you know, so if we did like a fifty dollar for, you know, staff time or whatever it is, that would make a lot more sense. Um, yeah, I mean, the cost of a part is three hundred dollars and an infraction and return of the car is five hundred dollars. Yeah, it would be, it'd be cheaper just to get a new car. And it would be. So so I I agree staff time.
Yeah, there's multiple. I mean, and if every day we're getting a hundred parts, that's one, it's one. I mean, you know, first time, hey, don't do it again. Second time, I'll pay fifty bucks. But as like they said, if it continues to progress and get worse, then obviously there needs to be. Other measures, but hopefully, you know, one time that we go, we don't do that again.
And frank frankly, we're we're not proactively going out, thinking of carts sincerely. It's not the top of priority list. Um, park staff, when you go to a park, they clean up, they'll typically come up. Now, it's when portion does get a complaint. But go out, they don't leave the office, drop everything they're doing, go pick up a cart. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a top priority proactive enforcement issue right now. Uh, just to be clear, right? Uh, so we're not spending time specifically targeting shopping cart selection. We are doing it as time allows. If we're in vicinity, it becomes a hazard, blocks the sidewalk, things like that.
So I disagree a little bit um on staff time. The reason I say that is because right now we're saying it's three hundred dollars a cart and it's not incentive enough for larger businesses to make the choice to not be. To lock in or, you know, two of them have. Uh, sounds like they have, but if that's not incentive enough, then having the higher fine for the higher size stores, either higher cart volume or higher. Square footage will incentivize them to make the choice as opposed to just saying like, at fifty dollars a time, that's nothing. Who cares?
Well, that's what I said, and over time, if it continues, then we raise it.
A progressive cost, though, that that's more staff time and more. Um, maybe not, I.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Because I may have to track the number of parts.
As opposed to just saying.
Who's picking it up? Is it code enforcement? Is it Pope or is it is it A D? Is it parts? Uh, it it can be a number of different places.
The cost of, I'm sorry. The cost of carts can anywhere from, you know, three hundred to a thousand depending on what it is. Um. That that just seems like a lot of work to track for how much to. Uh, I think in a fraction, um, but I don't think fifty bucks is enough. I don't think it's enough to. Make somebody really care. I mean, I don't know. I was maybe. Ten parts at a time and then you'd be like, ouch.
Instead of, instead of actual staff cost and having to track that, we we could come up with just an average number, you know, call it a hundred dollars an hour. Thirty minutes, you know, for, you know, et cetera, or double that. So basically a hundred dollars a cart, essentially, I mean, it'd be the.
Kind of where my mind was going.
Price was kind of, you know, whatever. I get fifty bucks might be a little low.
Well, you know, but I I could, but even at a hundred dollars a cart, when you look at Fred Meyer, they lose a hundred carts per year. That's ten thousand dollars per year. If they decide to do nothing. As opposed to spending forty or fifty thousand dollars doing to put in the system and then they have. It's it's not quite enough incentive because they have to keep this rate up for four years. And what else could they have done with that forty thousand dollars? I'm not really sure that we've incentivized. It's, it's not quite enough incentive because they have to keep this rate up for four years. And what else could they have done with that forty thousand dollars? I'm not really sure that we've incentivized that.
But I, what I'm considering though is the smaller businesses who.
Oh, I went to a different.
Well, uh, then we're charging a different fee for a larger store versus a smaller fee. I, it gets, well, whose card is this? Is this a hundred dollar card or a five hundred dollar card? And we might, I.
Yeah, we'd have to get some legal review on that as well. I'm, I'd be concerned about separating.
So my, my thought on it though is that it's because it's an infraction of a different rule. Because if we're saying the larger stores, which we have down below, it was suggested that something over a five thousand, under five thousand square feet would be exempted or have a different rule. So their, their infraction is against the rule when we said, hey, you have to do this to keep these on your lot, whereas the other ones have a different rule that they have to follow. Maybe they don't have a rule at all because they have three carts.
Right.
So because of that, the fee is mentioned because it's not an infraction of that rule. Or there's no fee because they have three carts and we're just gonna help them out. Which that's what we do now, right? For everybody's cart, we just give it back.
Throw them away. Honestly, I mean, we, we call them when it's. Practical, but sometimes we can't reach people like the, the required information to tell us who to call to return it. It's the responsible staff that's not present. So a lot of times we just throw them out.
Still be the practice moving forward if we couldn't identify who on.
Well, moving forward, the information is gonna be required to be posted on the cart, so we will be able to identify who it is. I mean, over time, that's, that's the non-marked cart is.
If, if they can be identified. Inappropriate use of resources.
Yeah. Um, and then kind of the, the other question that we had about, you know, responsible staff, I mean, code enforcement's doing part of it, parks is doing part of it. Streets occasionally does some, I mean, and they're all, I don't think any one of them is gonna want this, so we're gonna have to choose our least favorite, um, but. Uh, I, I, I don't know who that is. That's a marked decision perhaps.
Yeah, we need, we need to talk about that internally. Uh, again, it's gonna be as resources are available, it's existing resources. Uh, it won't be the highest of priority, particularly in our town, just properties or abatement projects or. Tell them the liabilities on playgrounds or ball fields or things like that.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Yeah.
Um, and then the last part, the exceptions for small businesses, there's. Five thousand square feet is, is about the size of some of the smaller stores in the downtown. Um, you get to about twenty thousand or like the Safeway and then you get much larger.
Probably it's like shopping.
Probably about four thousand, three to four thousand square feet.
I say shopping, I say poles, but.
So the, the exception for the small business, it could be the walking, uh, one of, one of those three options for. I guess, I'm kind of talking in circles here, um. If, if we were giving them the options, then maybe there is no exception for the small businesses, like be, because they can do poles or, or something like that.
Ten, so just walk you up to your car, make your step for you.
So maybe no exception for the smaller businesses then.
I think it'll be easier. Of course. And so this also can give them the opportunity. Let's say a place like Shopman Hock, they are doing their due diligence, they're pushing the cart out and a person takes off of it. They can call the police right then. Does that take it away from them? They try, right?
Yeah.
Right? And then do they say, okay, well, this person just stole from us. They are now the victim. Uh, what happens then? Did we still find them? Did they walked away with it? Uh?
That's why I think we should have a small store except for, because if they can't afford to put in a bigger system, that makes sense. But if that happens at a Walmart that decided like, we're just gonna have bars or we're gonna have somebody walk out, like that's this. That's, that's, I like the exception. I, I really think big stores should have. I, I understand not wanting to make businesses make that choice, but Walmart isn't a person who has to make a hard choice. It's a major organization that can. You know, if they wanna take the risk and pay five hundred and fourteen dollars per cart that goes off their lot and see how that goes, more power to them. Um, but. But that, that's.
And, and we can also always start with an exception for the small businesses, um, and then we find that it's still a common problem. Uh, with, with those, but always revise that.
Okay.
We certainly would wanna provide some outreach.
Yeah.
You know, give some feedback, uh, prior to council, considering this, you know, regular meetings, so. Uh, they're aware, um, and also maybe there's options that they have.
I mean, how it is. Yes.
Have experienced.
Yeah, a lot of those, uh, fair stores will have, you know, sister stores, other places that have stuff that works. I mean, they can come back and stuff, you know, you don't.
I think I have enough to work with. Are there any other kinds of topics, things that come to mind? We would wanna consider. Carts. I've got about an hour left to hit my next two topics.
You know, we gave you, we gave you five minutes per subject and we, we've been current hour. So, hey, government at work, good discussion, you know? Um, an hour on shopping carts.
Back and puts that, we'll go on to the next item. Uh, so this is gonna look very similar if you were on council, uh, about a year ago, but since many of you are new, uh, this will be brand new information, so. Talk about, uh, different potential housing solutions and options, uh, that the community, uh, has already undertaken and what's looking at currently and can explore in the future. So, um, we'll share just a couple of terms for kind of level setting here. So, uh, when we talk about AMI, that's the area median income. That's the area wide median family income calculated by HUD. Um, and so that's a number that the feds give us. That's what they use to base affordability, vouchers, all kinds of stuff on, they stay alive. Uh, cost burden is defined by HUD as households spending over thirty percent of their income on housing costs. And this includes utilities, insurance, property tax, HOA dues. Anything that's required for you to stay in or home. Uh, severely cost burden is fifty percent or more of that. Um, and so. Uh, there's also income categories. Um, when we're talking about the most severely disadvantaged or extremely low income households, that's, um, the. Less than thirty percent of that median income. So as we're talking about people who are extremely low income, making thirty percent of the area median income and then being severely house burdened. They're spending fifty percent of that thirty percent on, on housing and it's, uh, you know, it doesn't leave them much for anything else, so. Now looking at what does that mean for Shelton? Twenty-nine percent of our households in Shelton are severely cost burdened. Um, so that's a huge proportion of our apartments. Um, and it's greater than both the county and state at, at large. Uh, nineteen point six percent of Shelton's households are below the poverty line, which again is, we're gonna double the county and state averages, so. Um, the last point in time count we had, that I had in here was four hundred and seventy-seven individuals. Um, there are three thousand two hundred and sixteen manufactured homes in Mason County that are in need of replacement. Um, so that's. Trailers, modelers, uh. Oddly converted RVs, et cetera, et cetera, that are gonna, that already need to be replaced because they've exceeded their lifetime. Um, this housing needs analysis was done, uh, two years ago, uh, by FCS group and this is being revised as part of our. Uh, comprehensive plan process and we expect these numbers to be increased pretty dramatically, um, just based on the economic conditions that have changed. The FCS study that was previously done was based on data that was, you know, two and three years old and then. Now our current stuff is two and three years newer than that, um, but still two to three years old. So it's not even painting. A complete accurate picture, but it's, it's working with the best data that we have, so, um. Expect that when you, when you see the comp plan coming forward and those of you who are working on our compliance steering committee, the, the number of homes, uh. That the city of Shelton is gonna be expected to accommodate is about double what's, what's listed here. Uh, it's probably more like one, three hundred homes total. Um, so things that we've already done and this was done, um. Largely before I arrived was, uh, lowering our lot sizes. We went from the six thousand square foot minimum to forty-five hundred square foot minimum, um, which is great. You get more density. It's actually better for infrastructure construction, um, improved rate of return for developers, um.
Less grass to mow.
Yes, lowers, lowers the cost of, uh, the property as well. So, um, there's a lot of benefits to that. Um, we allow uh, accessory dwelling units by right on properties. Um, and some of these things are now becoming required by the state and Sheldon actually got ahead of that, uh, which is fantastic. Um, we've been working on P U D regulation changes, which we need to just finalize and bring to you guys. Um, public, private partnerships, there's been a number of those, like the Better Village, um, some other projects throughout the city. Things that we're currently anticipating that we need to work on and we're looking at through our comp plan and our future work plans are like the creation of a multi-family zone. Um, an inclusionary requirement. I'll go over all of these things in a little bit more detail in a second. Um, multi-family tax exemption programs and then other things like pre-approve plants or lift work units, so. Uh, multi-family, um, Shelton doesn't have that dedicated multi-family zone. Um, the only way you can get multi-family is a few zones allow for it. Uh, as a component of some other development or by right. Um, but in the neighborhood residential, which is our largest single zone in the city, you have to get a conditional use permit, which means noticing the neighbors, which means a hearing, which means uncertainty for developers. And it makes it really hard to want to engage a project because the thing that's most important for housing developers of, across the income spectrum is certainty. They wanna know that they can get a project approved and they don't wanna get held up for years and appeals and things like that, so. We've had difficulty attracting traditional apartment buildings in this community. We had our first application for forty-two homes, uh. That was, or forty-two apartment homes that was just submitted in March, um, and that's the first large apartment complex in over twenty years, so.
So second hand submitted though, so it's your apartments?
They submitted building permits.
No, they, they went through a land use hearing only for the planning and development and that was approved in twenty.
Couple of years ago.
Early, late twenty-two.
It was before I was here, so twenty-two.
Yeah, and but they had not submitted a building permit, which they had.
They are in, in for building or do currently. So it's fantastic. Our, our need is about ten times what they've submitted for, but we've gotta start somewhere. Um. So, uh, as part of our comprehensive plan, we're going to be identifying, um, areas that are already, uh, that already have our multi-families, uh. Uses, you know, like dark apartment complexes, kind of like above Thirteenth and a few places in downtown and so on and so on. We're gonna start identifying those areas and look, you know, are there areas that, that could grow out to? Are there other areas where it would benefit for new development to, um, have multi-family zoning, um?
Is, is the reason that we're not attracting multi-family is because our height limit has not been raised yet? Doesn't pencil for them to, to build two stories?
Is it because of water?
Cause we, well, we, cause we def- we definitely know that, that one builder, maybe this one wanted three stories at one time and it was, it was out of our clothes.
Combat, no, that was compatibility issue.
Okay.
They could have done three stories. It's allowed thirty-five feet is allowed in the area residential zone. That was a discussion about the compatibility with, with the. Neighbor and single tenant residents, because many of them gave one-story houses and so. Dealing with the developer and trying to get another project through is long discussion and one that they didn't necessarily agree with, but certainly it was a discussion that. The, the, at the public hearing from the residents around there, it was out of scale, uh, particularly the ones right next door, uh, their single family, you know, third story, they're looking at their backyards.
I get it. I get it. I was going through the same thing, so I, I get it, but so where are we on the height limit? We talked about that, what, December? I thought we were gonna, gonna do that. Before the comp plan, I thought.
It can be, it doesn't have to be in, in contact. In fact, it wouldn't be an element.
But I thought we decided already.
Yeah, we've received direction to work on it. It's, it's on the, the list of.
Okay.
Yep.
The long list of things I am currently working.
I always forget to ask. I think about it once in a while, then I think about asking.
It's on one of the burgers.
I, I will tell you, if I had anybody literally a single developer and say, I need the height limit raised for a development, we would, we would move that to the front of the list, but no one's knocking on that door right now.
So you don't, you don't think that the height limit has anything to do with not.
Not currently, no. I mean, even, even the one hotel proposal that we had that came in, it was a three-story hotel and it stayed under that limit, so. We're, I, I, while raising the height limit will encourage other types of development, like in our town and whatnot throughout most of the city, that the height isn't the pressure. Um, the predominant market right now is single family homes and those are just being built in two stories. There's just, there's no. Um, land use pattern and supports townhomes, which might be three stories and again, there's, there's no place for people to build apartment complexes that would be higher than thirty-five feet, so. Um, so anyway, the comp plan is gonna identify places for multi-family zoning and some kind of suggested ideas, um. And all of that's gonna include, you know, the idea that, you know, the, the council did give us direction last year when the height went up too, so. Um, multi-family tax exemption. This is another one that. If, if literally anyone came to us right now, talking to the people out in the void, if, if anybody wanted to kind of take advantage of this. Um, I mean, we would rush this through, but there's, there's tax implications for it, so, um, essentially you. Get a waiver of your, um, tax liability for either eight or twelve years and there's some requirements under state law for that. So they, your program has no affordability requirements. You could just do an eight-year tax exemption project right now, like if you wanted to encourage it all that. Most places have put some kind of affordability requirement or something on it. They're using it to, um, I think you have the kind of development they want to see, but it wasn't written that way. It was written to encourage growth in places. So, um, problem is you need, um. Typically developers who kind of worked in that space, um, because they're, they know how to do the performance to kind of account for the lifespan of the project as opposed to people who are, um. Kind of have different metrics and performance. So like owner operators typically don't do that, but builders who are selling them off might. Um, real estate investment trusts really like these projects because they buy them, they've got it all penciled out. And so, um, when I worked in the city of Redmond, uh, as the long range planning manager for a couple of years, um, we had. Over fifteen hundred units of deep restricted affordable housing built for, just in the span of two years. Because we had these programs in place and everybody was taking advantage of it, but the development economics in downtown Redmond, home of Microsoft and Nintendo are slightly different than the development economics here in Shelton, so. Um, but I also, I helped the city of Lake Forest Park get theirs through, um, we, you know, have, have looked at. A couple of different ways that this could work here, um, until we see a little bit more development pressure, um, for, you know, higher rise multi-family, we're just not going to see the M F. Be successful, but it's always something that we can work on and get implemented and have as.
Okay, the exemption is for the improvements essentially on the property, correct? From the time of construction, so.
Correct. Yeah, so the, the building itself gets the tax exemption for either eight years or twelve years. Um, and the twelve-year program, as written by the state, requires it, um, for the life of the project. So that those houses, apartment units or condos or whatever they decided, uh, have to stay affordable in perpetuity. So they get the tax credit for twelve years and then, you know, there's affordable housing for.
What's, what's the tax exemption? Is it property tax?
Property tax exemption.
The valuation of the improvement. So if the property is X and you build, you know, you build on a property, you add Y to that for the improvements, you still pay X, but like maybe you don't pay.
So we're, but we're providing more police and more fire and more, and more road maintenance and grading and the fire and all that stuff, so. How, how does that affect the city financially? If, if we're not getting that, we're not getting our share of that, of that property tax either, or just the state's share?
Local.
Local. And so the, it's a, it's a policy decision. We know that the cost of our services is going to go up, but also we're getting deep restricted affordable housing that provides workforce housing is an economic generator. Because honestly, the people that we need to run are grocery stores and restaurants and things like that need at this point.
Oh, I'm absolutely all for it, if, but I wanna make the city.
It, the, the, the remainder, it, it is strategic.
Where you place it, and the strategic where you place it too, you place it, your downtown core, where you need that density and you've got less impact on those city resources, right? By building it, you don't do it up at an undeveloped forty-acre site, um, that, that's, that's gonna require a, you know, a structure.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm all, I'm all for however you can get them here, but all house.
Making lots and we're not builders, like, those are the things we could target.
Yeah, you, you basically draw an M F T area on the map. Yeah, and so it incorporates these vacant properties, these properties are prime for redevelopment. Um, where do you want to target those investments?
Could we start a creative land trust or get someone involved in the private sector so that we could. Um, block down the M F Ts and use any land trust as part of, uh. The tax incentive and, you know, the property on top of the land and the land itself. You know what I'm talking about?
Many land trusts are a great tool. Um, they have to be seeded though. Um, like they, they've gotta have the money to be able to acquire the land. I mean, the city, you know, could in theory donate or sell at reduced price of our land to seed the trust or something like that to. But it, it's gotta have a funding source.
We've got a hundred and twenty-eight acres for that right now. We've got a hundred and twenty-eight acres for that right now. Yeah, well, it's still gonna build a.
Yeah, I misunderstood. I mean, selling it, the funds don't seed because they have to go back into the utility. Um, if you're looking at the the development potential up there up Rockdale, uh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we we could do something and we'll talk about public-private partnerships here in a minute, but you know, if we were to take that same hundred and twenty-eight acres and. You know, develop the subdivision, um, that had mandatory inclusionary in it. Um, or how, you know, mixed income, you know, maybe there's some apartments, maybe there's some townhomes, uh, some houses, you know, kinda really. Mix that up, um, we can define what we want that to look.
That'd be a great, great spot for some mixed use up there for some townhouses, apartments and houses over there, I mean.
Now, we can definitely look into that, maybe with the city, one of the only thing that we really have is assets is is our land. The big problem with that is it's it is all in the water fund, uh, so we have to make that fund whole or find a way to make it.
Well, it's not that we don't have water projects that we could use money for.
Um, so, uh, bonus units, um, so this is. Here here's the discussion between bonus versus mandatory, so we have our allowable densities. In our single family zone, uh, our neighborhood residential, um, and then we allow duplexes, triplexes, et cetera, without requiring a C P. So we've got our our. Allowable density, um, we could allow bonus density if those units were affordable, um. But that's an allowance and, you know, does does that pencil out for the developer in the long run to want to take on? The the burden of creating that and then, uh, you know, the programs to manage that and so on and so on, um. Bonus units aren't super. Because it's it's voluntary and there's there's, um, it is the lost leader, right, so it's really, it's only. Effective, um, when it's mandatory inclusionary, so when you give a bonus unit, but also. There's, um, you know, uh, the bonus units are provided. So you say, let's say you've got, uh, ten townhome development, picking something very small. Uh, easy numbers to work with. You got ten townhomes, so ten percent of the units have to be. Uh, mandatory inclusionary set aside at, you know, eighty percent A M I or something like that, so. One of those ten units would have to be set aside, but then you provide a bonus unit for that, so now they're at eleven, and so. The developer has the opportunity to recoup some of their costs by building the affordable, and then once you've built that affordable. Um, then there's a lot of different models for how that remains affordable, who holds the covenant, who manages the covenant. Um, all kinds of work that. Lower cost, yeah, um, cause it's, there's in places where they have an in-loof fee, um, it. Developers will always just take the in-loof fee because you can pay the money right now and be done with it, and. The money never buys as much because of inflation and things like that. If we get twenty thousand dollars today, that's only worth, you know. Fifteen thousand dollars tomorrow for construction, and so we can't build that same unit, so. Really, the mandatory inclusionary, like I said, when we were in Redmond, was. Phenomenal for generating units. When I was in Sun Valley, we had something very similar that generated a couple of units, not as many as I would have liked, but. Um, you know, it's it's pretty common now, larger jurisdictions are doing this. I think we're starting to reach the tipping point where the economics might start working in favor of this, and if we have large developments, um. You know, two thousand homes, fifteen hundred homes, whatever, like we have some of which have been proposed, this pencils out very quickly for that. So it's something, something that we can consider some options in the future. Public-private partnerships, we've already kind of talked about this a little bit. We've already seen some here where, uh, cities, uh, can either collect and allocate funding to buy units in projects. So if somebody's building a hundred unit apartment complex, we can have, you know, our affordable housing funding buy down essentially ten of those units. Serve those for workforce housing purposes, affordable housing purposes, um, so on, um, and so you're actually able to take into ownership stake. Or investment stake in some of these kinds of projects, um, works great if you have money to do that, um, and sometimes there's grants available for that, sometimes there's. Um, and we'll talk about some, uh, tax kind of, uh, options that we have here, revenue, uh, options here in a minute. Um, and then again, as I mentioned, you know, the city has, this city currently has already provided land to some projects, um. And as long as we make, uh, the special funds full, like that land.
Uh, do we have to make the special funds full if we, because there are some R C Ws out there that if it's for affordable housing. We can donate or give away land for for like a thirty-year affordable housing.
We can, it's it's my understanding that we can do that for the general fund. We can donate whatever for all of the, but for the rate paid funds, it's treated differently. That's my understanding.
I thought we we or we discussed this.
Not sure, I have to look at it again, and there's some allowances, yes, but I I need to make sure whether it's a donation or. A reduction, then you have to.
It's for for affordable housing, because we were gonna do that with the workforce housing project. We were going to lease them or sell that land. On a contract. But, uh, and it was going to, uh, the money has obviously stayed in the water fund, but.
But donation outright, I'm not sure. Give that again.
Uh, so some cities do pre-approved plans. This is really common for E D U's actually, um, because E D U's are pretty easy to. You know, have in a backyard and they remove the the highest cost of the, which is the design cost. I mean, really, a lot of times it's it's expensive to design them as it is to just construct them, so. Um, by having the pre-approved plans available, somebody just comes in and says, you know, I want a one B for my backyard and it's already engineered, it's already approved. We just confirm setbacks and boom, done. So E D U's, it works really well. Some cities have done it for full-size homes, um, and.
Stock plans are if a developer comes in, they're gonna build multi. Multi-number of houses, maybe one subdivision, they can stock that plan, so they'll bring in a plan, they'll say I'm stocking this, and they can build. That house multiple times and they, uh, they receive reduction.
But anybody can buy that stock plan?
No, 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 this is, this is different. Those pre-approved plans is different where anybody has access to a.
But it's gonna sit, the city can also get a stock plan in place.
It it would be essentially as if the city was stocking the plan.
But we're talking any use, not really full-size houses.
No, no, it could be full-size.
So let me talk about this before, uh, one of the problems you guys had mentioned was that not every plan works in every area. Because our landscape is so different and things like that, so, um. If if we can make this work, I I think it's great. I think it'd be great if one of the cities say, hey, I have a lot right here. I wanna build, can I, what can I build on that? And you guys go, here's ten options, and I could go, okay, that works for me. That would be amazing. But I know that with our landscape and different things, that that's difficult, so how do we overcome that?
Um, I mean, for the most part, we could say, I mean, I'd say the vast majority of our city is on fairly flat. I mean, gently sloping lots, um, oh, a lot of the undeveloped lots are. Sloped, um, so there might be some challenges, um. You can have, you know, maybe there's a a plan that has a daylight basement, or maybe there's a plan that has, uh, you know, two-story. Set into the, you know, perched over something or, um, there's there's probably different ways that we could do that, but those get very niche, um, if we just. You know, uh, sometimes also, if you've got the pre-engineered pre-approved plans, somebody can take that and modify it, right? And, you know, oh, I really love this, like, seven C, but I wanna put it on, you know, this lot, so they might need to do some work on their own with it. But essentially, we release the copyright, the the designer doesn't hold the copyright, like currently, you know, if if A B C development comes in and they stock a plan. For their development, they still own the copyright to the plan. We can't release that to people. Um, but if we stock the plan and the the designer has conceded his copyright. And we can, somebody can take it, they can modify it, they can flip it around if they wanna mirror it, they can, they can do whatever they want.
Yeah, and I I love that. That makes it so much easier, you know, somebody who wants to build a house on a, on an empty lot, but they don't really know. I love that idea.
I I think it could be a great idea as well. I think we should also talk about the size of radio use. I think, what are they now, um? Oh, they're a thousand now? I thought the counting was thousand, we were eight hundred.
And you have a sixty percent, uh, or you have a six percent lot coverage rather than fifty percent. So you actually get an increase in lot coverage, um, within eighty years.
Well, that's great. I thought we were smaller than thousands, so that's great.
The only issue with the pre-approved plans is that we have to pay somebody to do it. We can't just go buy a stock plan from some, you know, company and then give it out for free. Um, we have to pay somebody to design it for a source, you know, so.
And we saw that, right?
Lacy, Lacy has pre-approved some, uh, has a. I'd be almost two years ago, time flies. They had had a whole lot of success. We'd have to reach back out to see what kind of success they've had. And people taking advantage.
The city, the city of Clovis, California had much more success. They actually came to the A A P A conference to brag about how many people had used their program. Um, and I mean, we're talking one, if you doesn't, I mean, it's, but it's it's still a way to get cheaper, affordable, especially that you need the backyard eighty thousand, so.
So so how did, so how would this work? I come in, walk upstairs, I said, I wanna pick that house. I pay the permit fee, I start building it, then go through the inspection process, there's no like waiting time and. And all this, looking at plans and all that, because we've already got the plans, right? There's probably more stuff to do with the land.
Site plans, utilities, site plan, we need to make sure it fits on the parcel, lot coverage, if you wanna do a garage, you have other. Anything else that you could develop.
And and there's still a minimal amount of building inspection that has to go on, because I mean, we have to make sure, I mean, it's it's not on, I mean, we need geotags sometimes. We need, I mean, there's there's other things we need to consider.
But certainly.
So, so this is something that if council was interested in, we would just need to add it as a budget item to, you know, save some money for design tests to build. You know, a certain number of plans, and if this was something that you wanted us to proceed with, like, sounds like there's some interest. I mean, we can find out, like, what would it cost to do some? Bold design of, you know, it, and house plans or something.
They do cycle out, co-cycle. They're good for about three years and then you'd have to update those or start.
I mean, I I I do maybe like ten plans, but I would do like three, three and three or something like that, maybe nine, you know, different sizes, like. Five hundred square feet, eight hundred square feet, thousand square feet, you know, something like that.
Out, and that's what you're saying, too. I I love the idea of that. I just wanna make sure it pencils out. Because what if we only have five people a year who spent tons of money on it, you know what I mean? So I I love the idea for a person like me who wants to come in and build, and I don't know what I can build, love that, but. If the city just dropped, you know, mad amount of money on it, and you're only getting five people a year doing this, just. Right, did we just waste our money?
You know, I I will say one thing that Sheldon has that I haven't seen in any other place I've lived is like some very dedicated, small local builders. And I can think of a few people who would take it.
Is that enough to warrant it? Cause I don't know.
Let me, uh, i- if it's okay, I'll I'll actually do some more research and find out, you know, like, what would it take? Also, I mean, if they're doing like a whole good plans for us, I mean, we have to, we would have to go into an R P for them, for an actual design and everything, cause that's. It's an architecture service, which we're capacity butting along. Um, but, I mean, I can at least talk to a few architects and just find out what would it cost to design us some stock plans and come back at a later time and let you guys know.
It's not like nobody here would give that idea.
Yeah, I mean.
We just wanna make sure financially.
I mean, back in the old day, you bought your, uh, you bought your your plans from Sears Roach.
You bought the whole pit.
Um, it it also, it'd be nice to reach out to the community too, so who would take advantage of it? Do some free polling, right? Who's out there, who's building, who's building spec houses right now? Uh, that would be interested in that, or, you know, I'm going, I guess it's built soon as well.
I think A B U's to be a small store.
Yeah, four eight, four eight, well, four eight twelve, but no more than a thousand, so.
Yeah, I think they're limited by, I think it's two hundred and eighty-five. Is that the minimum? Size for a residential unit?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't actually know.
Sorry, I mean, they have to have certain requirements. They have to have a place to bathe, cook, uh, uh. Yeah, meat, breast.
Okay, I'll, uh, do some more research.
Great idea. I think I, or ex deputy mayor talked about stock plans for years, which is not, I know not stock match, but it's kind of a general idea.
Uh, so something else that we don't really, we, you kind of could pull this off in a couple of different zoning districts that we have. Um, but we don't really have any, like, preset kind of, you know, predetermined allowances for our live-work units, so. Um, this is a picture, um, from downtown Redmond where they have, um, little storefronts and then you kind of go up the stairway in the back and your apartment's there and. Um, you know, it's great for people who are kind of owner-operators of small businesses, artisans, lawyers, architects, um. Uh, there's a red computer repair shop, massage blades, it's like a healing crystal store, there's a bunch that all, you know. That we only have to make one investment in both your business and your residence, um, and, uh, it actually, it's really good for attracting startups. And kind of creative economy folks, so, um. We are already kind of looking into this as part of our comp plan, um, and, uh, hopefully we'll we'll come up with some policies and some design standards moving forward. That would allow.
I thought it was allowed in a code already.
You you can technically do it, but we don't, we don't like call it out with the design specs that promote it, right? Like, you you could get, you know, one of the downtown zone properties, have, you know, have the residential up above and blah, 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 but it it it's not designed to allow, like. For example, um, like a row of townhomes that are all set up for that, and like, um, you know, e- especially in greenfield development, it's allowed. It 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 can be done, it's not encouraged.
We don't have a lot of. Or really, except for redevelopment.
We actually, I've.
What do you consider downtown?
I I would say anything that's not up on the plateaus is downtown, and we have actually surprising large number of vacant units. I was doing a tally and we've got. Couple right over there by Safeway going out railroad, um, just.
Redevelopment, tear them down and start over.
They're they're vacant, there's there's there's. There's one just right out the door over here, um, that the church owns, um, right on Grove. There's another one further down Grove. There's. There's enough room to probably get a hundred live-work units in the downtown right now without blocking.
Get on it. That's your goal for twenty-five, man.
Star fronts that are storage units? Why is that?
Wasn't prohibited, hasn't allowed use at the time, and so they're grandfathered in and.
Not, it's a legal non-conforming use, so if they if they're established prior to the, prior to the codes, uh. Not allowing the storage as ground floor use, they can remain there up up until the use changes. And then the change use, they have to comply.
And another block changes and then they, we can only force it whether the change is.
Well, it's in the code now, but yes, if they, if if there is a change in change of use that that use vacates, um, then. Yes, then it would have to.
And some of what we're seeing is just kind of an economic response, like there's, there's not really, they're, at the time that this was done, there was not higher and better use. But now, and hopefully with some of the other things, we'll talk about next presentation, um, you know, they're welcome. And we'll we'll see that people will see the value of maybe moving the storage uses elsewhere.
Well, I was complaining about there's closed-up storefronts downtown, part of it is because people use them as storage units, so.
Higher and better use will encourage those storage units to go away and be used for retail.
That's not a lot, it's not been allowed for a long time, storage units, and I'm not sure if we still have any down there.
There's still some storage on Coda.
But one on second or first, no, second, second, one on second as well. Uh, they've just been there long enough that, I mean, we're never gonna tell somebody, you have to close up your doors and go away, but once they've gone away. Allow someone else to come back and do it.
Which definitely shouldn't have poured up, like poured up windows.
Working on that. All right, um, so some of the challenges, like I said, development economics, we're we're not really like. Kind of tipping the threshold on maybe some inclusionary projects. M F T, we just don't really have the projects that have the density that really make those kinds of projects pencil out yet. Um, funding, uh, we don't have a dedicated revenue source right now for staff, for studies, for constructing things. For, you know, interfund payments, where we just, we don't have any revenue dedicated for affordable housing. Uh, staffing, there's one of us doing six things. At at any job in the town right now, so, um, you know, we would need to bring someone on to manage any additional programs. Um, and then critical mass, there's not really the community that does affordable, especially dedicated, affordable. Low-income housing tax credit, uh, kinds of projects here, um, we can recruit those people, but there's, there's not the critical mass. You know, the architects here don't design those kinds of projects, that the the builders that we have here don't build those kinds of projects, et cetera, so. While there's a great community, kind of, you know, moving further and further north, you you get more of the people who have the experience doing that, you have less of that experience down here, so. Even if we were to find, you know, a low-income housing tax credit developer, I mean, there's people who, I mean, have had conferences. Or, uh, professional organizations, people that do this work, but without the ecosystem around that to help build and fund and manage the projects. It's really hard to attract them, so.
We did attract one once. Chase them away.
Um, so, uh. Um, so, uh. There's a bunch of different options that the council could consider, um, there's two sales taxes, one of which is a one percent. Um, which is for special population housing, there's lots of people who qualify for it, but it's anything from disabled individuals, the elderly, seniors. Um. People with special needs essentially, um, and you can use sixty percent of that has to go towards actual provision of housing. You use the other forty percent for, um, you know, staffing needs or studies or site readiness, things like that.
That's one tenth of one percent.
Oh, sorry.
You said one percent, I'm saying, I'm getting excited for a second, but wait a minute, no, that can't be right. One tenth of one percent, and that should be, and that should be more than sixty thousand.
That's about three hundred fifty.
Yeah, because that's what we're getting, yeah.
Yeah, there is the point oh one for six percent, which is a lot of, um, and that's for any affordable housing, so. Below median income, um, but it's only fifty thousand dollars a year, but it it, you know, with when combined with some other funding sources and. If we had somebody on staff eventually who was, you know, housing planner, that's, you know, really well versed in finding the grant money and and putting this stuff together, like. We can start building, you know, sorts of programs around housing, um, and both of these, uh. Think have to be initiated by council, but you know. Um, and then there's other tools that are out there, real estate excise tax, um, affordable housing levies, actually put it on property tax. Um, and then, like I said before, land sales, um, and direct participation, so these are kind of our funding options for. How can we put more money into? An affordable housing, you know, fund or program or all of the above, um, you know, if we could get anywhere up to four hundred thousand dollars a year, that goes a long way. Especially when you start looking at, you know, year over year contributions and start getting to a place where, you know, there's, there's the potential, um, to. To really make a meaningful dent in the affordable housing that we need to provide workforce housing. I've got a staff member right now who literally can't find anything in town, who, I mean, we're not talking. Find something nice, talking, find something, and there's just nothing available, and, you know, I don't wanna lose anybody because they wanna, you know. Move somewhere else to find decent housing, so.
Are any of these the ones that, you know, I've talked about is the one about for the, for homelessness kind of, or these?
So one tenth, one percent could certainly, both of both be a affordable housing sales tax, where the sales tax for housing could. Could be, depending on, depending on the demographic.
That that could. Money we could use to to hire somebody to run a mitigation site, a pallet shelter of sorts, if we can get somebody to buy the pallet shelters or get a grant for that. That'd go a long ways, you know, to operate that.
That that really could.
I mean, really, we need, we need, we need everything. We 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 need houses, we 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 need a mitigation site somewhere, um, we need somebody to run it. Three hundred thousand dollars, you know, the Salvation Army's million two in in. Long, but I don't think it would cost us a million two to have somebody else run it, I think that's, that's a pretty high amount, I think. Yeah, it's fifty units, I think we could run fifty units ourselves, with one of our local agencies for probably, you know, seven hundred, eight hundred thousand dollars, so, I mean, we're halfway there. If we were to get that tax and that would.
And and once we start doing it, it gets easier to do it, right? I mean, last year, they had the rapid capital housing grant that we couldn't apply for. We we didn't have a site picked, we didn't have plans ready to go, we didn't have any shovel ready projects, we didn't have, I mean, we, we tried, I reached out to. Crossroads and Toyota and, um, Community Lifeline and tried to pull together a project at the last minute, but. We didn't have anything ready to go, whereas, you know, if we had something like this where we could identify some sites, get some plans, you know, even preliminary plans. And then we can go after that grant money and bring that in and start working, but, you know, we. The the, a lot of these grant programs, they want to see that you you put in a little bit of legwork before they'll just give you the cash, um, and so. You know, we we've got to start somewhere, and we frankly just can't, right? So, these are things that if there was, uh, interest from the council, we could work on bringing forward. Um, also, this presentation I had, um, just links to MRSC. Um, if you are interested more in, uh, Washington State specific affordable housing, that's kind of the end of the presentation, so.
I view America, we should pursue housing, multiple kinds of housing, all sorts of taxation, just to get housing. And housing, 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 at all levels, so I'm back there seeking these measures. And, um, that's the biggest barrier to improvement of folks, keeping those here in town. Um, surviving them as well, as much as they can afford up there, and stay in their homes. Once, when the market's housing. Especially if we're worse.
And these options increasing are.
Sales tax, um, I mean.
But not property.
Uh, the ones that I've highlighted and read are sales tax, um, the real estate access tax is, um, on transactions, so at the time you sell your house. That generates revenue, so.
But not a yearly.
That that wouldn't be. Sorry.
We're collecting both.
Yeah, and the affordable housing.
No, the, the state access tax, one and two.
Um, and then the affordable housing levy, that is a property tax, yeah.
But we're really giving that?
No.
No, we're not already doing that, so that would increase.
Yeah, depending on, depending on what rate you you would establish, right?
When I'm listening to people in the community, they're not gonna love that, you know, I mean, a- as great as it sounds to us, you know. Having a big thing, we're going to create your tax, you know, that that's a tough pill to swallow when you're. When you're already sort of like paid about, so.
So something like an affordable housing sales tax credit that is point zero one percent, you know, that's, that's. Fractions of a penny on a ten dollar purchase.
And so it's the top one, that's the one tenth of one percent.
Uh, yeah, the tenth of a one percent.
That that hurts a little less, you know, to to the community members, I feel like.
And it's a sales tax, I mean, fuck the TBS and.
Right.
Not on, it's not on a gallon of milk, so.
And it's probably paying a little bit out, you know, outside the community, not just people within the city limits.
Exactly, it's like our TBD.
Wanted rent control, you know, like.
Yeah.
People are hurting, like, someone's got a half bed where. Where landlords and fifty percent of our homes here are owned by landlords, and a lot of them are LLCs that have no, we have no control over. They're crowding out the market, and people don't have affordable homes, and then you're, you're a single family. Person running by a home, you've got an eighty twenty, and you're getting outbid by full, full cash offers. You know, you're getting the market crashing, there's there's nothing to buy, all our, all our kids are like living at home till they're thirty or more or under. You know, so, I mean, we're having most of general house, generational households because we have to now. You know, not because we're immigrants stacking up, because we're all.
We're four million housing units short in the United States right now.
So, this is what I'm saying, let's, let's get creative, let's do all these things, if it's gonna possibly point one percent of my.
When I, when I buy a T A B, that's not a big deal, but when people are like, oh, my property tax already went up, that's when it, it hurts a little, you know.
And then rents are going, and landlords are not, especially landlords who don't really care how far they can.
With with the appropriate program associated, associated with the the sales tax, would you wanna have more information to add to you?
I'm I'm all for doing the sales tax, it's such a minimal amount for such a big, it's a decent return for us, and it's, it's, it's a dime on ten bucks, right? The dime on ten bucks, it's a dollar on a hundred bucks.
And you have that bucks.
Huh? A penny on ten bucks, sorry.
Ten, yeah, it's a ten.
So, sorry, yeah, so, it's such a small amount, and it's a sales tax, and it's not on a gallon of milk or cottage cheese, it's it's on taxable items. I'm all, I'm all for that, property tax, I'm a little nervous, property taxes are pretty darn high.
And that's why I'm saying people are not gonna be happy about that, so.
But as in for the the sales tax, I'm totally. For all sales tax options, because it's not on food, it's not, it's on items that we choose to buy.
I want, I want staff to be working on real solutions like this and not banning solutions, we need to increase the amount of housing, we need to go to root causes and not. Put banings on on small, because we need to actually go and create housing.
Thing is, what we're trying to do here today, I think that we're we're looking at is, is everything here, but, you know, every option.
So, if we brought a kind of a spectrum, or do you wanna see it refined, I mean, are we talking about? Yeah, I heard navigation mitigation sites for affordable housing, and you know, there's transitional housing, there's permanent supportive housing, there's the whole spectrum. Of affordable housing.
There is some movie once where the guy goes, bring everything, bring everyone, bring everything, bring everyone, people.
I mean, we're we're happy to bring the spectrum.
Well, I I I think, or, I think that our market rate houses are coming naturally.
Yeah, which is.
I think they're they're coming, I think we need to work on workforce housing, affordable for, again, whether they be rentals or purchases or or a little bit of both. Um, we had a big chance at that and we pissed it away, and we need to work on on something for mitigation sites, so we can actually, you know. Have options for people that, you know.
Could think supporting housing, do was better than a mitigation.
Well, it it would need support, it would be, it would be support all, it would be supportive, be like Longview. Longview has case managers, security guards, director, they, so, so. That that's what I meant, it it needs, it would need to be supportive, is, yes, you're right, mitigation, supportive.
I definitely would love to hear about more supportive housing, but most of us, I know what's available here and a lot of it, I sit on a lot of different things in a fall house. But I take it pretty seriously, but I know that supportive housing is number one. He should have a lot of people out here that really just don't know how to maintain, and we need to find a place for them to, and what we can, you know. Teach classes, teach them how to, you know, how to function on their regular day to day basis, I mean, there's people out here that I don't know if they know that, so. Your supportive housing, buildings like that, I'm all about it, this is a.
Exactly, well. What's that?
And I said, I'm just, I'm seeing some head nods there, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we can most efficiently dedicate our time to what. Council wants to consider, so.
And and the best thing is when, once we have a dedicated funding source, you you can leverage that, right, it's it's the down payment on the loan instead of having to pull it out. Higherly, and so with, you being able to leverage additional grants and tax funds and things like, I mean, basically, you can multiply your money, you know, eight to ten times. Just by having something in the bank, so, you know, as we're talking about four hundred thousand a year, times a couple of years, times eight, you know, like, we start looking at real. Big projects.
And maybe it's not just about fun, maybe we'll go out and we look for these, we look for these people like the ones that we're gonna do the, do the, um.
Oh, certainly.
The workforce housing project, we go out, we go find them, we don't, we we just don't, uh, worry, do it all on our own, we. Hey, you guys wanna come in here and and get a thirty year, uh, you know, thirty year deed restricted property for affordable workforce housing? Eight, whatever the AMI we decide on, um, there was a lot of questions about AMI back then, whether it was enough or not enough. Um, you know, and and start, start at least getting with the people that work here, live here, you know, we got a lot of people that don't live here. Because there's nowhere to live, and like you said, your employee has to move, it's that's been looking every day. Uh, for a place to live, nothing, and if you can find it, you still can't afford it, and then, nowadays, they require three times, let's talk about that, by the way, three times. Your income to rent a place, is there an ordinance we can tune or something, talk about that, because that's almost ridiculous, that if you got a two thousand dollar rent. You gotta make six thousand dollars a month, I mean.
It's a very common nationwide.
Is it really?
Absolutely.
There's, there's things we could do towards rent control, but that's something that is.
I I would never be interested in rent control for, under normal circumstances, I would be interested in, in in, uh, senior parks where they're. Trying to price them out of their, out of their, their homes, they they downgrade their homes, they sell their homes, they move to these trailer parks. For five hundred bucks and then it's hundred, six hundred bucks, then it's seven hundred bucks, eight hundred bucks, hundred bucks, basically these, and these people are really selling them nothing, they're selling them this little square piece. With with four by four piece of grass in front of it, and I would, I would consider that, but as in for a normal person, you know, if I wouldn't consider it control.
I I would suggest if anybody's interested in looking into like very cool housing models, like Singapore's, uh, national housing program is. The gold, platinum, diamond standard of housing programs, and, uh, they have several homeless people and everybody has a home, uh, that they own, and. Um, I I mean, that's not anything that we can do here, but, you know, but it's, uh, it's a different nation, but, um, you know, there's. There's solutions out there, the bottom line is, works best when government has the affordable, key restricted housing. That they own, they control, the rent control stuff is always difficult, it's always fraught with a lot of issues and legalities and takings, claims and stuff like that. If 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 we can provide something that will help temper the market, um, you know, and people can always live in luxury products if they want, but. Have the right to, you know, clean, dignified housing regardless of their income.
There are a lot of these land trust models that I have grown on. It's over here in one state, and one very popular one in Burlington, Vermont, and news are thinking that we can be looking at, at, um. Non-market rated housing, where we actually have the real cost of housing that you pay for. By having your land being bought by the community land trust and having your building be part of the, um. Infrastructure that you uptake, and that's, that's your, that's your equity is the building, not necessarily the land, the land's based on the trust. And folks only recycle the, um, what you're living in, not the land, the land remains in the trust, so that you, you can sell your spot. They're ready to move, but at the same time, you're insulated from high rents, you're paying the real cost of rent. And then you can start building equity and then move on to your next place later, instead of paying exorbitant prices for for rent and they go up. And the only person you're cutting out are landlords who are over, over pricing a lot of units. So if you can get real cost housing through community land trust, it's a model that's very popular and can be done, I'd like to make Shelton. Burlington, Vermont, and have places where we have a community land trust that buys up all these land, pieces of land. We put multifamily housing on it, that's not even below market rate, it's zero market rate, it's real cost housing. We can have this here, and we can have this, a lot of, um, cities are doing this, I think Vancouver. Um, Vancouver, British Columbia is also doing it, and a lot of examples all over, um, I think King County is doing it as well. I think Orkis Island is doing it as well, and there's also ways we can use, uh. Um, environmental land trust and community land trust to help us get certain pieces of land, put it in the trust and start this off. And who pays the city's commitment to, um, to, you know, help, help us by partners, put aside and start building capital so that. The city and the private partnerships can own the capital, and we farm and farm the capital that that lies on top. And we provide real cost housing at zero market, not a market rate, that's insulated also from ups and downs in the market. Like thirty years from now, we have this great creative arts district, and then thirty years from now, it gets bought up by somebody LLCs from China or. Russia or some somewhere that we have no control over, that land, like, we can keep in the community and recycle it towards keeping people in their homes. People, keeping old people, keeping seniors, keeping immigrants, keeping all of those who live in Shelton, stay in Shelton. And that's the, that's where I wanna go with this council, with our, with the next year and a half that we have until the next election, and, um. I think we can do better, I think we can do more, I think all these things we can do. And I think it's time now, because everyone's living on a cap somewhere, or, um, you know, overstaying their welcome at home. And or, you know, people have vacation houses that are taken off and not really taking care of the homeless, you know, their properties here. And I don't know, I'm just saying that we need to have solutions to keep people, locals, people in their homes, and, uh. Insulate ourselves from the ups and downs of the market, and this, this is the best way to do it, like, there are models, we should pursue that, this is one good step.
The reality is, there's a fine demand, so the reason the rents are so high is because they're, if the demand is high, because of supply, look, if we bring the supply. It will all even out, and so, I mean, I I've lived here forever, my family's been here five generations, I saw what Shelton looked like in the nineteen eighties. And they were almost giving houses away, every other house had a for sale sign on it, you could buy a very nice house for fifty thousand dollars in the nineteen eighty. Why? Because there were lots of them, and so if we get these developers here, and they start building, it'll even out, it'll be great. And so, it it'll give more people an opportunity for homeowners.
To stabilize, stabilize, stabilize rents, and act maybe home prices as well, but you still have. I I don't blame every landlord, because you still have landlords who are paying three hundred thousand bucks for a, for a twelve inch square foot home. You know, that they have a payment of eight hundred bucks on, then they have to rent four hundred bucks, so I I don't blame landlords completely, um, on, you know, they've they've got bills as well. So we don't know what their expenses are, but I I agree, the more homes we have, you know, the, and the more rentals we have, the. The lower the rents will get, because if we were to build, let's say that affordable housing project that we were looking at, um, four hundred homes. Those four hundred people are coming from somewhere, they're coming from the substandard places, maybe with some slum lords around town, and those slum lords. Or places that now either have to fix those places up, sell them. So somebody can actually buy one, live and own it. Or, you know, or or sta- stabilize rent because I'm not gonna pay pay fifteen hundred dollars for this place downtown. That's crappy when I'm, there's a brand new place up up the hill for eight fifty, was it eight fifty for two bedrooms, thousands for three bedrooms and twelve hundred bucks for bedroom homes is what that project was gonna was gonna, was gonna be, so.
Then the other landlords will have to.
Yeah, exactly. Except for the ones that, you know, paid three hundred thousand bucks for the house, but you know. They'll sell it, right? That make any sense?
Is there, is there anything else on housing before I go to the last topic in the last?
So Mayor and I met with Holly O'Ro from Peninsula Alliance, U C R Peninsula, they provide um affordable housing in Kitsap community area, looking at maybe as much as they can. Another colleague in last Friday showed her four parcels up on Harvard City surplus back in twenty twenty one. They have some interest in those parcels potentially. They primarily focus on multifamily housing. But they're not steadfast in that. So there is some interest on continue talking with with Holly uh about those parcels. Again, they've already been surplus. We can go through uh disposal process as appropriate. You know, the council sees fit, so just kind of on the lookout there. Um, we certainly would have some co-forma attached to that. If there was a transaction with me, but I think this is an organization that um needs some of the goals that we're talking about tonight.
So. I'm good. All right. Uh, let's go ahead and uh get a motion to extend this meeting. How long do you need the next subject?
Please, like an additional five minutes, but it depends how uh I say ten to be safe.
I mean, the motion extended to quarter after, how's that?
Motion to extend the meeting uh to eight fifteen.
Right, motion second to extend the meetings to eight fifteen. All in favor, say hi. Motion carries. All right, there you go.
All right, uh, so this is just an update on the Shelton Creative District um and what we're working on with this project, so. Um, if those of you who are around uh in twenty fifteen, there was the downtown visioning plan. And one of the things was identifying a arts district kind of along Coda Avenue or as as, sorry, Coda Street, you guys said. Um, kind of the spine of an arts district. Um, and that was it, you know, it was a little bit of a design, some pictures, some ideas and policies and um, and but nothing happened um from then on. Um.
Not much. We painted some sidewalks and stuff like that.
One of the things the former city manager baited me uh into coming here with was the idea that I would get to work on this arts district. And so um I got here and said, all right, cool, where's the money? And he said, oh, there isn't. And I was like, oh, no. Uh, but uh I took off and ran within it. Uh, so um, and a couple of very serendipitous things have happened along the way. Uh So uh I was at an economic development uh expo uh last year um, where I went to a presentation on Washington State Creative Districts. And uh it's something that the State Arts Commission uh invented a couple of years ago. Um, the first communities that receive the certification are now just going through their recertification to do that every five years. Um, but when you do that, um, they give you a startup operating grant. Um, and you're eligible for capital projects for small scale projects. Uh, anything from wave finding to physical improvements to um facade improvement, whatever you need to kind of keep working with your district. Um, and then the State Arts Commission provides you with technical assistance, training, networking events. Um, I just last week went to um the, what they call the convening of the creative districts. It's their annual conference is over in Chawila, which is their their second uh district uh that was ever certified and that's uh an hour north of Spokane and it's a town of twenty six hundred and they love their art. I mean, while we were there, they had a gallery walk, they had uh their farmer's market, they had concerts in the park, they had um, uh, just uh a really incredible, uh, they they have a performing arts center that they build. I mean, this is a small town with not a lot of money. And they really squeezed out every drop they could figure out how to make this work. So um, just uh, it's a really great group of communities that have achieved this certification. Um, and then we literally get put on the map um with the other districts. And they're talking about um for next year, working on um kind of a a brand wide marketing campaign. So everybody's creative district is, you know, some kind of like a passport or a tour or something like that, really trying to um, encourage more tourism related creative districts. So um there's no additional regulation required. Um, typically it's programming and physical improvements um and um really uh focused on community outreach and community involvement. So um, why would we want to make creative districts? So like I said, um, it was just the Coda Street Arts District identified in the twenty fifteen downtown vision. Um, briefly mentioned this at Blue Zones uh Summit uh year ago, and uh they actually thought this was such a great idea that they selected it for one of their projects for funding. And I'll talk a little bit about what they've done to support us so far. Um, and then the benefits of having creative district, according to arts law, the Washington State Arts Commission is to promote your community's identity, grow jobs in the creative sector. The creative sector economy in Washington is a moment a dollar sector. And that includes everything from craft wine and distilleries to, you know, kind of more traditional arts to even uh and they consider um like video games and movie industry and things like that to all be part of the creative sector as well. Um, uh, some places are focusing on culinary arts. There, you know, if you're a local farm table restaurant, you are being celebrated. If you're um, you know, a bakery or uh something like that, you know, they're they're focusing on that as well. Um, it's really great for attracting artists, startups, creative businesses and uh also they want to look at affordable housing as part of the district plan. Um, because they want the workspaces, maker spaces for artists. They want a place for people to be able to not just come to the community to make and sell art, but to also live in the community, be part of that community as well. So um, the application process is to gather a team, which we've already done. Um, we reached out to a bunch of downtown business owners. Uh, people who are kind of recognized leaders in the local arts community, people who are uh event organizers, community advocates, so on and so on. Um, you develop a plan, you conduct your outreach, you apply for certification, um, application period opens on July first. Um, and then um, once you get accepted, you can do your activities. Um, so April first, we had a design charrette and the landscape architecture, uh, architecture company, uh, Herbsworth. Uh, they were hired by Blue Zones to actually come facilitate the session for us. Um, we had city staff, uh, some Coda Street business owners, uh, arts enthusiasts, people who are kind of recognize that people in the community, um, Blue Zones participated and so on and so on. Um, and we came up with a couple of ideas uh at this charrette that ended up um getting turned into a design, which I'll show you here in just a little bit. While we're talking about, you know, the potential boundary of the creative district, where uh districts need to be fairly compact. They can be up to two miles, but they have to have recognizable boundaries. They can be contiguous. Can't have like part of a district here and part of a district over here. Um, so really having like downtown Shelton as our, like the core of our district uh makes a lot of sense. Um, we identified so many uh what we consider like artisanal businesses, you know, where we're producing products or selling art or um, you know, uh crafting beer or uh, you know, patent sip and things like that. And the new gallery uh right here on Coda, so on and so on. So we uh, I even included the Shelton Civic Center. We've got our rotating art gallery out here, which right now has some of the best art I've seen since it started. Like we're attracting really, really great quality. Um, so we already have quite a number of businesses and I didn't include everybody probably, but um, you know, so this is kind of a quick snap plug of this presentation together, but um, we'll do, you know, more significant outreach as we're moving along with this project. Um, so the 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 blue boundary was uh on the map on the screen here was kind of like kind of the original Coda Street. Uh, arts district concept, just a couple of blocks along Coda. You know, we're proposing to actually make the certified district kind of that between Franklin and Grove, between First and Eighth. That way we can capture some of the interesting new businesses. We've got uh someone trying to create an event space uh in the Old Bank of America building. We've got um, just really unique things that are close to unfolding here in town. Um, and then also, um, I know I've mentioned our rail trail project and our our cross town trail before. Um, you can see, I mean, the the trail is gonna come really close to the boundary on one side and be running along the boundary on on the other. So um, you know, the idea of being able to bike or walk to art um and, you know, experience our downtown is is becoming more of a reality. Um, we actually, just as an aside, um, just had our kickoff meeting with the um consultant yesterday who's um working on the foot draps for our rail removal. Um, and putting in the interim trail, which is gonna be just gravel to start. Um, we've received uh four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in grant funding that I'm coming to you guys real soon to do the acceptance on. Um, and then we're gonna go out to the R and B for final design for the trail. Um, and that's gonna be the the big trail, the paved trail with the benches and the lights and the public art and all that kind of stuff. But um, yeah, I've really been hitting the road and trying to shake money from the sky to make this stuff all happen. Um, and uh so like I said, we had the design charrette, um, and all of these images came out of the design book that Herbsworth put together for us. Um, and so uh, you know, things that everybody kind of had talked about at the meeting, what did we want to see along Coda Street? Um, lighting and street trees, asphalt art, having, you know, kind of activating space on the road. Um, which is great for traffic calming and it's a really cool palette that, you know, people might be interested in. Uh, having bike parking. We're talking about running our bike trail to the district. Let's have a place for people to park. Uh, weight finding, seating, stormwater infiltration, traffic calming, all kinds of things to make it a more um we'll say railroad avenue like streetscape um over on Coda. Uh, we don't have to be a one main street town, you know. Uh, so we're um, we're required by um the application process to arts law to have uh some kind of outreach event. Um, we decided to just go for broke and have an art walk. Uh, so uh, first one I've ever tried to organize and, but I've got a great group of people who are helping out with it. Um we have space for up to eighty vendor booths. Um, it's, the application period is still open. We have over forty artists who've already applied. Um, and if anybody's watching at home or wants to share with others, application window's still open. We'll take more. Um we're uh including over twenty local businesses and people are gonna host artists in their space. Um, and uh other people we found out are already having their own activities. They're having live music at their place or their, you know, the people are taking this and running with it. Um, so Saturday, uh, July twenty seventh, it's gonna be evening kind of night market concept. Um, we're gonna have Coda Street and a couple of blocks of Second and Third closed. Uh, we're gonna have live music, stage porta potties, food trucks, the works, just really trying to do like a, like a mini version of what they do over in Olympia. Um, but focused on local artists and the great local art scene that we have here in Shelton. And uh the city's gonna have a booth with this and we're gonna be doing our outreach and talking to people like, hey, you like this? What else do you want? What are we missing? What is, what uh, what do we need? And here's more about our application process. So um, this is gonna be our outreach event and this is uh uh aggressive, but it's it's gonna be um, a lot of fun. People are very excited about this, so. Um, so in advance of that, we are planning to do some temporary improvements. Um so uh, the first of which is along Coda Street, we're planning on doing some restriping. Um, instead of having parallel parking along Coda, we wanted to do angle in parking. Um, not the reverse angle in parking that was done on railroad that apparently caused generational PTSD in this community. Um, for the laughs, you apparently were there. I was not. But anyway, no, it's standard nose in angle parking. Um, it's great for traffic calming. As you can see by the design up on the screen, we're planning on alternating it every couple of blocks. That way, um, it does traffic calming. So people slow down, see the businesses, because right now, if there's nobody parked in the, in the um parallel parking on Coda, it feels like a four lane. People are blasting down that at fifty miles an hour. That's not the streetscape that you want for arts district and sidewalk dining and all the kinds of things. Um, I mean, we've got a new Mexican restaurant opening up down there, a floral shop opening up down there right now. Um, we've got uh the art gallery that just opened. We've got other businesses that called and expressed interest. Couple of our longtime stores have turned over and we've got new stores down there. It's it's, stuff's already starting to happen and we're, we're hoping it'll go further. So the plan is for restriping, um, kind of in- indicative of the diagram here. We've um we're purchasing these planter boxes. They're concrete boxes that have seating on it. And they're gonna go in some of these blank spaces with the bench facing towards the sidewalk. That way, um, there'll be a street tree. Um, because we don't have trees on Coda right now. Um, but there'll be, there'll be some shade. They'll just break up the visual environment a little bit and help again the traffic calming.
Not on the corners, right?
Not on the corners. No, you can see they're, they're in the the middle of the blocks moving down the street. Um eventually, we would love to have some smaller planters with like some flowers or something on the corners, but um, and these are low, so they're not gonna block any um, side lines or anything like that. I've heard some of the problems with the previous planter boxes and why they're not there anymore and these are not those, so. Um, anyway, we're also gonna be able to squeeze out some more ADA parking. We don't have any ADA parking along Coda. Um, and we've identified a couple of places where to be able to stripe out some ADA loading spots. So that's also gonna help um with kind of the the appearance and traffic calming and walkability and accessibility in this area. Um and then uh the diagram down here was originally just a concept diagram, but I actually have a a real design diagram that we got from P U D three. They're gonna be installing some uh light poles on the south side of the street. Right now, there's only light poles on the north side of Coda. Um, and so it's a little darker on the south side of the street, but that's where a lot of our businesses is on the south side. So um, our plan is actually to put in these light poles and street catenary lights back and forth down Coda. Um, to give it that same kind of vibe that you've got out on railroad where you're, you're in kind of like a clean little downtown and not just a concrete channel running down down the way. So um street trees, planters, street lights, restriping and parking, all of that stuff. The, the only kind of hitch and a giddy up is the um we don't have the money for the restriping anywhere else in the budget, but what we did have is a line item in the budget for downtown this year, the fifty thousand dollars for, and it was, it was pretty broadly worded for downtown improvements. Um, for street trees, sidewalk replacement, things like that. Public Works doesn't think they're going to be able to use all of that this year, but it's already the budget. And so we're proposing to use about half of that for the restriping plan, because the civilian here has to draw out where all the lines are gonna be, make sure they're dimensioned and meet ADA standards and so on and so on. And then actually do the painting. So um, that's kind of a the painting's gonna be done in-house, right? Pay staff and get the yellow license up. But um, so anyway, we just wanted to kind of, I guess, the idea tonight was to just.
Affirm, that's a, the direction to go. We, as Jay mentioned, we saw the Riverd Avenue, um you know, street diet program. I think that uh there's lessons learned. Uh, I think Coda's different than railroad, frankly. Um, but it's also a different, different layout of parking too, having an alternate and a nose in parking.
I think it's a great idea.
And so this is, yes, this is all temporary. We 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 don't have the money to do the big permanent improvements, the stormwater, the real planted street trees, you know, but we're we're doing it real cheap to kind of prove out the concept and improve the look of it and try to get this all done before the art blocks. People go like yeah, check out Coda Street. And then, you know, later on, when when we have to come back and ask for the, you know, the permanent money to make this stuff, you know, real and forever. Um, hopefully there's, you know, broader public support, that kind of stuff. Um, and then as we look for other funding sources too, like the possibility of creating up a main street program or things like that, there's, you know, there's ways to keep building on the single road.
So we're doing the lights though, right? Ri- right away?
Yeah, the the lights. The lights, the lights, the street trees and the planters, the this, the street trees and the planters kind of depends on, you know, the restriping.
Yeah.
Hopefully it's all right with everybody. Um, and then uh the the lights, P U D's already working on. I think Jay signed, or you signed it today or.
We'll wait until tomorrow morning. I wanna make sure and talk to council this morning. Uh, P U D's wanting a worker sign as soon as possible so they can start getting the work done. They need to, the, what what we do is city staff will go and open up the sidewalk, dig a hole, they plant a post, run the legible uh to it, put a mast for the street light and then uh, run the catenary lights across the street at the same time. So it's uh, time's winding down. For council.
Uh, so if you know anything about me, I have a store that revolves around local art. So this is obviously my alley. I love all of this. A couple of things. Coda used to be the highlight of downtown back in the days. I love the idea of revitalizing that area and bringing it back. You know what I mean? It might be kind of fun to bring some of those historic pictures down there, some way, shape or form. Don't know how that happens. Um the alleyway. I feel like we're missing out on utilizing those alleyways. I went to Ballard. They used their alleyways for their farmer's market. They had the cute little flags above and lights in there. And their alley stayed clean. So what they did is they blocked off the alleyways on the weekends and whenever they had the air vent with those planter boxes, right? And then, you know, the day of the garbage trucks come or whatever, they moved those out. Love it.
Art, art alley between railroad and Coda is actually, I put it up here, we're, we're gonna have that closed during the event as well because there's such cool art that the youth connection has been working on back there. And I, I mean, I was blown away. I don't walk the aisles. Ever since we saw that, I I walked back there a lot. It's very cool. Um, so yeah, we're gonna highlight that and find ways to activate that uh more in the future for sure.
And something that I'd be curious about is, in my opinion, I think architecture can also be art. There's some amazing, beautiful historic homes down here. There's some amazing, beautiful store homes down here, and I know you have this little blue square. But just outside of that blue square, we have some amazing, beautiful homes that could kind of fit into that. So maybe that's something that's going down the road. And all these are positive, correct, one kind of uh I'd be a little concerned about where color care could be involved with it.
Originally in the twenty fifteen plan, it was when the P U D still owned the building and uh. They said, wouldn't this be a great idea if this was an arts incubator? And that was kind of the long term plan for the building and. Yeah, unfortunately, um you know, there wasn't an art incubator there, but we do have a business there and um you know, as we realign the parking, we. Talked to them actually to make sure that, you know, it works with them, it's um I mean, it's, I'll say it's not the most compatible uses for an arts district. We play the cards we're dealt, unfortunately. Kind of like what we were talking about before, I'm not telling anybody they have to leave, but once they're gone, maybe that's the opportunity for us. Agree with you, yes.
We could expand this all the way to the historic district and make this art. Bigger. And maybe one day we could have a historic district, catinars district, both raising money for downtown, so um. Excellent idea, let's go, I love this day, let's do this and we need to highlight all the things that the council member. People was talking about, especially the the alleyways and the. Creativeness and the amount of people that we can bring and also the meaning of work as well and just the uh. If the possibilities of making this like that place where you can go do on the weekends. And you can get out of your car and park either one of those parking rides and then you can walk in on the trail to bring this in. And if your whole weekend is here, spend downtown going and eat a cafe or then spending money over at um a dish and. And walking around downtown out of your car and spending money and going getting ice cream at the um at the little shops. Olive olive oil shops or the donuts, whatever, but getting out of your car and spending time and spending money downtown. This is such a great opportunity and thank you for taking this on and bringing it to life and going for it. With um all these exciting things going on in July, thank you.
Um I just wanna share real quick, like it's it's. I definitely like took the charge to try to get it going, but it wouldn't be happening without everybody that's jumped in and gotten really excited, so Blue Zones uh. Got us a five thousand dollar sponsorship for the event, um they provided the landscape architects for the charrette, they're providing um the bike racks that are gonna go in on Cota eventually. It's one of the one of those blank spaces that aren't parking spaces, uh some new bike parking. Um P U D three is putting in power poles and guide wires for catenary lights, Marmo Gallery hosted our charrette and they're running our event website for the art walk. Shelton Downtown Merchants is uh handling a bunch of the money for us, Shelton Mason Chambers doing uh insurance uh. The list of people on the screen is just some of the folks that have helped, um we've we've really just brought out. An amazing community of people that want to see this happen and it's super exciting, it's uh one of the things I'm most looking forward to. I'm gonna work for right now, so. Um there was an interview uh with Glenn Allen on uh KMS just the other day, if you wanna hear her talk about it. Probably give you a little bit more information than her six minute talk, but um yeah, we're we're just really jazzed about it and I wanna let you guys know and. Make sure everybody's cool, just awesome creative direction and we're like in city.
Anybody have any questions for Jay? All right.
You got it.
Thank you, Jay. Uh exciting stuff, by the way, council have any new items for discussion? Absolutely wonderful meeting, great conversation. Oh, does the city manager have?
Mr. Mayor, I have fifteen seconds.
Oh, you that's that's all you have, sir.
No, I received a request from Economic Development Council uh asking for a letter of support for an. Economic Development Administration federal grant for a the Goldsboro substation up off of uh. Samson Field, so I just wanted to let council know that we're applying with uh Porta Shelton and. Uh this kind of needing to be for federal funding. That substation would add capacity to that area which is desperately needed. Um and economic driver there in Shelton.
And benefits us in the future.
I can forward that, I'll forward that letter off to council, you can review it, thank you so much.
All right.
I forgot to share the P U D plan, but.
Well, we 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 we're we're actually got like forty five seconds, so um but yeah, great meeting, everybody, great discussion, it was nice to sit here and uh. And bounce ideas and passionately back and forth off of each other and uh. That's government at work, thank you guys, this meeting is adjourned at eight fifteen.